Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Here.
Present.
Here. President, is there a motion on the floor to go on executive session, please?
Sure, let me put my glasses on. I'll read. By the way, Mr. Murphy called, he is on the way. Okay. Uh, we're going to executive session. Let's, oh, okay, to discuss, wow. Discuss a strategy related to Springfield Federation of Paraprofessionals, collective bargaining because open meeting law would have detrimental effect on bargaining. Discuss strategy related to security guards, local 1459. Unit collective bargaining because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on bargaining. Discuss strategies related to crossing guards, collective bargaining, because an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on bargaining. Discuss strategy related to the nurses, UFC, local 1459, collective bargaining because open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position in the school committee. Discuss strategy related to substitute teachers, local 1459, really? Oh, same unit, okay. Collective because the open meeting law would have a detrimental effect on bargaining position. And number six, to discuss strategy related to Technical Employees Association, MTA, NEA, collective because collective bargaining would have an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on collective bargaining position of the school committee, and the committee will return to open session.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. The motions made are second, please.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. We'll call what is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, Lawrence Fishamov, spatter passes. Good evening, and we're going to start the public speak out. Our apologies, we ran a little long on executive session. We were settling some more contracts, that'll be ratified tonight, so we appreciate your patience. The first speaker will be Sarah Banning. Ms. Banning, please.
Good evening, school committee members and Springfield community. My name is Sarah Banning, and thank you for allowing me to share the impact paraprofessionals have had on my experience as an educator in Springfield Public Schools. For the past four years, I have served as Renaissance's 10th grade English teacher. And in this role, I have seen firsthand the power of paraprofessionals to ensure all students are supported, included, and successful. I have been lucky to have the same amazing paraprofessional for all four years. Shout out to Ms. Paul. Last year, I watched the amazing pairs I work with navigate new, learning new technology and supporting sometimes reluctant scholars over Zoom. My paraprofessional was instrumental in providing consistent one-on-one time with students, especially as my 10th graders worked to grow their writing skills and confidence. One student in particular, we'll call her Ellen, shows poignantly the power that our paraprofessionals have on student achievement. At the beginning of the school year, she frequently expressed a lack of confidence in her abilities as a writer. Through my amazing pair's tireless efforts, Ellen achieved a 72 student growth percentile, SGP, on her 10th grade MCAS. And most importantly, she ended the year declaring, "I am a writer." None of this would have been possible without the support of my paraprofessional. All people deserve a living wage. Currently, the Springfield Public Schools is denying that to hundreds of paraprofessionals in this district. With inflation rising and the cost of living increasing, many of the citizens of Springfield are struggling to afford the basic necessities for a good and fulfilling life. The district has the power and the funds to ensure that our paraprofessionals receive a wage that ensures their families can eat, pay rent, and enjoy life. For a district that claims to prize a culture of equity, the current paraprofessional pay is a blatant inequity. Use your power to correct this injustice. Give our paraprofessionals the pay they deserve. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Banning. Vera Craig, Ms. Craig, please.
Good evening, school committee members. My name is Vera Craig, and I'm a paraprofessional at Homer Street Elementary School. I've been a paraprofessional for a little over seven years. I was born and raised in Springfield and attended Springfield schools. My father, Ralph Russ Amanda, was a music teacher in the school system for over 30 years. And my sister, Maria Russell Mando, started off as a special education teacher and rose up to the ranks of assistant principal at Chestnut Middle School. So as you can see, myself and my family are not strangers to the Springfield school system. At Homer Street School, I work with great paraprofessionals, a great staff of teachers, and under the exceptional leadership of my principal, Catherine Roberts. Pairs wear many different hats in each year as we meet the demands and challenges that face us each and every day. Each year, we receive many accolades at convocation from you, the school committee members. We do appreciate it, but what's behind those many praises and empty thank yous? There is a void, a big void. We are into the 10th month of negotiations with you, and all we are asking is more than 2% every year to make a decent living wage. I don't think you really know what a difference that would make in all of our lives. The difference it would mean is having more money for groceries instead of putting back food because we can't afford it. Do you know how embarrassing it is to put food back in line with people behind you that are waiting to check out? Not taking on a second shift at, um, a job, a second job and being able to spend more time with our families? Meeting the monthly bills, which has gone up considerably? Trying to make ends meet is proving to be almost impossible, especially with how high gas, oil, and food has gone up recently. We are hurting financially as, as well as being stressed. This raise would not only improve all of our lives, but would make a significant difference in restoring our faith with you, our school committee, in doing the right thing. My brothers and sisters of our union are outside right now in front of City Hall in the cold for that raise. I don't believe in begging, and I don't believe my sisters and brothers in our union are in favor of that either. We still have our dignity and pride. I am asking you to make that difference, and it will go a long way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Thanks, Vera. Donna Laparia, please. And if I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize.
No worries. Good evening. My name is Donna Lapierre. I'm from Forest Middle School Life Skills Paraeducator. It's a Monday morning at Forest Park Middle School in Room 109. I get settled in and shortly after, walk out to greet the students at the buses. I walk them to our classroom, help them put their coats and backpacks away to get them settled. I hand out breakfast and help them open their milk and anything else they need to help opening. I clean up the breakfast mess and start the bathroom process for those that are diapered. Once I'm done changing the students that needed to be changed, we get ready for math and ELA, and I support them one-to-one in their learning. After academics, we go to P for 45 minutes where I play with them. We walk back to class, help wash their hands, and give them a snack. After they are done with their snack, I clean up and get them ready for the teacher to read aloud to them. While the teacher is reading to them, I sit with them and keep them focused. Now it's time for lunch and time to wash your hands again. Again, I pass out all the lunches and help them open them. When lunch is finished, I help the students clean up, bring the students that need to be changed to the bathroom again. I get the students set up on i-ready for the last part of the day. Now it's time to get the students ready to go home. I help them get their coats, backpacks, and anything else that needs to go home today. I walk them to their buses and off they go. That is what an ideal Monday would look like at Forest Park Middle School in Room 109. But as we all know, the day never goes that smoothly. We deal with roller coaster of social, emotional needs. We deal with meltdowns, argument, and disrespect. We have students that are on all different levels, and we try very hard to meet all their needs, tailoring our approach to each student. I truly love my job, but honestly, I don't know how much longer I can do this job at this rate of pay. We deserve respect and an equitable living wage for the work we do to support the future of our community and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lapierre. Susan Montney, Montnemi?
Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, members of the school committee, happy St. Patrick's Day. 59% of my ancestry comes from the Dingle Peninsula, County Caryan Valley, sheriff. I'm here tonight as a member of the Springfield Federation of Paraprofessionals and the Contract Action Team. As a pair of 25 years, I earned just $28,000 last year before taxes. As a unit, we have waited two exceptionally long years and challenging years through COVID for a wage that keeps us current with the cost of living. All of us are enduring the highest rate of inflation in 40 years. The cost of living rose by over 8% last week alone. The cost of gasoline is $1.50 higher per gallon than it was a year ago. I just paid $500 for 100 gallons of heating oil. The cost of groceries for a household of two is obscene. My current frozen, frozen hourly weight of 19 hours and 88 cents is no longer sustainable. The city has received new money in excess of $225 million in ESER funds and $403 million in Chapter 70 dollars. Our unsettled contract has line item dollars from the 2021 school system and 2122 school department budgets. You can well afford the proposed contract by the Springfield Federation of Paraprofessionals. I have contacted each of you personally, expressed in my heartfelt words my passion and dedication to Springfield Public Schools. The current cost of living with a lack of wage to keep pace is now a quality of life matter. This year was supposed to be my retirement year. I was looking forward to celebrating a total of more than 38 years of volunteering, of working as a paraprofessional and a substitute teacher. That plan is now no longer possible. A pair is present in the classroom makes it possible for teachers to teach. What all the pairs do, we are worth our weight in gold. In my second grade classroom, working as a team with an outstanding teacher, the i-ready math and ELA data continues to show steady and consistent gains. Pairs make many of those goals possible. I have worked with small reading groups all years, all year, to teach phonics and sight word foundations. Children are showing constant gains in their abilities and taking an interest in reading books. The same is true with third graders I meet with for mouse support who are getting ready for their very first MCAS test. There is nothing quite like the celebration I get to see in a child's eyes when they understand a challenging concept. From me personally and sincerely, on behalf of all paraeducators, we perceive your lack of action to negotiate a contract that keeps pace with the current rate of inflation and the actual cost of paying our bills as disrespectful. We need some relief, and we need some relief now. I am aware that you have all signed to send our contract to mediation. Respect us, please, mayor and members of the school committee. Respect the work that we do and our value to the children of this city. We need a living wage. It's a matter of quality of life. Loving my job as a paraprofessional is becoming and has become unsustainable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Montney. Terry Gibson, please.
My name is Terry Gibson. I am an organizer with Neighbor to Neighbor located at 191 Chestnut Street. And today, I show up and stand up in solidarity with the pairs, speaking on behalf of the pairs. Their current struggle right now for a, their demand for a living wage, rather, is a fair fight, and Neighbor to Neighbor joins in with them. Just wanted to show up and show solidarity for them. But I also wanted to mention that it was this governing body, this city council's body, that has financially, or some members, rather, that have financially disenfranchised some of these members. And I just wanted to draw attention to that. These are taxpayers, these are voters in the city of Springfield. And to see them and to know that a lot of them are working two and three jobs in order to make ends meet does not seem fair. And so I just rise to say that 2% does not make a dent and demand a living wage. Thank you, I'm not sure how much time I had.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gibson. Thomas Fortini, please.
Thank you. So, Springfield resident and host of The People Speak Out on YouTube. We're talking right now about the cameras in schools. So I was handed this paper in the parking lot one day, and my understanding is that there's more people talking, maybe people outside. But anyway, providing this live footage to the police, while I understand that there are perfectly legitimate reasons for this action to be taken, I do believe such actions, such action violates the spirit of the Constitution and our rights to privacy. Now, one could argue that students don't have privacy in public schools. I would argue that surveilling them with cameras and providing that footage live and recorded to a police force is outside the spirit of the Constitution. When the people vote or do not vote, they expect the representatives to respect not only the letter, but the spirit of the Constitution and the flag that you all pledge allegiance to. No one said democracy would be easy, no one said freedom would be easy. And anytime we think we have an easy solution to a challenging problem, and that the solution, and that solution treads closely to our freedoms, our rights, and our liberties, then that solution is the wrong solution. And we should look for more challenging solutions, because no one said this would be easy. But I'm not here to argue constitutional philosophy. I'm here to say that those of you who voted for the, for this without the public weighing in on a ballot should take a long, hard look in the mirror when you go home tonight. And those of you who voted or did not vote for these people, to say to you that it is with the spirit of the founding fathers of our Constitution to, excuse me, that it is not with the spirit of the founding fathers of our Constitution to give these people a second chance. You need to stand up, run for office, or support those newcomers who do. One last thing, the masks on the kids. We don't have them at the retail stores, we don't have them at the restaurants, we don't have them at the grocery store, we don't have them anywhere. But we still have them in schools. I think it's wildly unreasonable, illogical, and inappropriate, and I want to know when that's going to stop. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fortini. Quadir Thomas, please.
I think that's me.
Mr. Thomas, Quadir Thomas? Again, Quadir Thomas? Okay, we'll move on to Emmanuel Ortiz, please. Mr. Ortiz? Say again, Mr. Ortiz? One last time, Mr. Ortiz? Okay, we'll move on to Anna Lee Delma. If I pronounce your name wrong, I apologize. Anna Lee Delma? Say again, Anna Lee Delma? Say again, Anna Lee Delma? Move on. Kelly LaRoe, please. Kelly LaRoe?
I'm here.
Ms. LaRoe?
Yes, I'm here. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, um, how long do I have? Because I just have a short statement.
Three minutes.
Okay, I don't, won't take that long. So, um, thank you for having me here. A member of Executive Cabinet emailed student record that was a part of a confidential due process hearing.
All right, Ms. LaRoe, I have to caution you with counsel that you cannot
I'm not saying any names.
personnel matters nor student information.
I'm sorry, excuse me?
You cannot get into personnel matters nor student information, as been told by our counsel.
I'm not saying anything, and I'm speaking of the issue that I have a right to speak of in front of the school committee because it's statutorily under the school committee.
I, I understand, I'm just giving you the criteria.
Thank you. And no, and I did read those, so I will be mentioning no names out of courtesy. Okay, I will, I'm gonna rebuy my time and start over. A member emailed student records that are part of a confidential due process
Ms. LaRoe, we're, in, counsel is indicating you cannot speak about personnel matter. Attorney Phelps, can you please clarify?
I actually can, because I'm not mentioning any names, and I've researched my rights on this. So if I am denied, then I'm gonna need to have
I'm not, Ms. LaRoe, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're being denied. Attorney Phelps, could you please come to the mic and clarify the parameters, please? Thank you for your patience, Ms. LaRoe. Attorney Phelps?
Thank you, mayor. There is, has been always a policy, not only of this body, but with regards to personnel matters, that the, there is not a public discussion or a public presentation with regards to a personnel, a person or by title. And I understand that Ms. LaRoe has said she would not refer to anyone by name, but the position is being referred to, and that is not permissible in public speak out. We do not talk about individuals, whether it's a position or students.
So I will interject the position with a certain person. That should satisfy that.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
She said she would interject with a certain person, not the person.
That will satisfy.
Well.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that.
Can you clarify that?
Instead of stating the title, we will refer to such person as a certain person.
Again, a certain person is with regards to a personnel matter.
Yeah.
So if there's a policy
It is a school committee matter. It's a school committee matter, and if I am willing to withhold the name and the title, then I have every right to be here, and shutting me down would be bringing a litigation that is active in front of, since you are the person
Nobody, nobody is shutting you down.
I have a right to speak.
A person, a personnel matter that we've been advised by counsel, Ms. LaRoe. That's, that's
You've been advised by counsel who represents the person who made the breach of confidentiality. So that's a conflict of interest.
Yeah, okay, again, we can't, that cannot be discussed under public speak out. Okay, that cannot, Attorney Phelps, can you please clarify again?
Sure, be happy to, mayor. With regards to policies or procedures of the school department or of the school committee, that's always been fair and appropriate for a public speak out. And we have, so if there's a policy or a procedure, that would be appropriate for a public speak out, but not with regards to any personnel matter.
That clarifies it. I don't know where you can go with this, Ms. LaRoe. On it, you are indicating you're specifying, so we cannot
So I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the position that the dish, that the school committee, well, certain members of the school committee do not want me to state what happened, and that certain who represents all parties does not want this message taken. So since I think I have about a minute left, I am going to say that breaches of confidentiality are illegal. Be ashamed of herself.
Okay. Right now, cut her off right now. See, that's exactly the reasoning. You can't now, you cannot do that disparage someone on it. So you got your point there, cut her off. Unfortunately, try to be as respectful as we can. Attorney Phelps, what's the ramifications on that, please? And we would do this for anybody and anyone. Can you please clarify?
Sure, with regards to the ground rules of the public speak out, which were violated despite warnings, you know, I guess I would have to work with, if at all possible, Focus Springfield with regards to removing the personnel name that was uttered by Ms. LaRoe. But it has been the policy of this body for decades that we don't talk about personnel matters nor students. And there has been for this body on other occasions, when someone at Public Speak Out mentions someone by name, we have interjected and silenced that person with regards to that issue. Fair game to talk about practices or policies? That's perfectly appropriate, and we've had many people do that without mentioning names.
And just let me clarify, too. Many a times when that has come up before that, the superintendent at that point in time directs the appropriate personnel to deal specifically with that individual and/or family or student to protect confidentiality and try to resolve and see what the issue is. And, and we've done that a couple of times when it comes up. And people have been very respectful in saying the superintendent will have the appropriate person, and sometimes the person is right here to go speak to that person when we were in person at that point in time. So we tried to be respectful, we warned the individual. Again, you cannot disparage and throw people's names out there without both sides, if there is both sides of an issue going on. So we apologize to that, we mean no disrespect to Ms. LaRoe or anybody, but the ground rules were laid out there. It's policy, and you cannot speak if it's pertaining to personnel matters, specific individuals, and/or student names on that. So with that, that concludes the public speak out. We'll take a one-minute recess, and we'll go into our regular session. Thank you, board. Good evening and happy St. Patrick's Day. We apologize, we ran a little late on executive session and turn on public speak out. So we appreciate your patience. Could, Madam Clerk, we'll call the meeting order. Could you please call the roll?
Present.
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 Here.
President, could we all please rise for a moment of silence? And let's dedicate that to the people of Ukraine, and then we'll go into the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
And again, a happy St. Patrick's Day to all. I want to thank Focus Springfield, Brendan, especially, and the whole Sway, and Steve, the whole crew, thank you very much for your continued efforts to get these meetings publicized and live. We appreciate that. And I'd also like to congratulate both our Central High School boys and girls Division One basketball teams. The boys put on a valiant effort last night on the number one ranked DC team, and, uh, you know, at the tail end, a little rally came, but they had a great, great season, very proud of them. And Coach Watson, and I'd like to also, Coach G, that the girls will be playing for the state championship Sunday, and we're very proud of both squads, what they do on and off the court. That Central is the home of scholars and champions. And I know Superintendent Warwick is going to go into it, but there was a beautiful editorial in The Republican today on the great work that superintendent and the teachers, families, students, business community, school committee have done to, we've, we really raised the graduation rates tremendously and dropped out, dropped down dropout rates tremendously, and that's a testament to our continued commitment, and there's more to be done. I know Superintendent will get into that, but I just wanted to, for the viewers who might not be on later, that's important. We'll go to Section Two, Approval of Minutes. Approve the Minutes from December 9th, 2021, Special Working Session, February 10th, 2022, Regular Session, the February 17th, 2022, Special School Committee Meeting, and the March 3rd, 2022, Chapter 74 Committee Meeting with Putnam Vocational, which was just absolutely tremendous. Any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can we separate out December 9th from the rest of the meeting?
Sure, sure, no problem. All right, so with the school committee's indulgence, let's separate December 9th, 2021, and the other dates that I mentioned. All those in favor? We'll have to take a roll call, I believe. Attorney Phelps?
December 9th, first?
Yeah, okay, we could do December 9th. Do we still, am I still obligated now because Zoom that we have to use? Major, okay. So let's, let's break down December, just on December 9th, 2021. Roll call vote, if there's no questions or comments, roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Yeah, I'm sorry, motion by Vice Chair Collins is her second.
December 9th.
Second, please. Second by Attorney Murphy. Again, just breaking it down to December 9th, 2021. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Abstain.
Yes.
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 Abstain.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes, more than sufficient votes, this matter passes. Now on...
I'll make a motion that we accept. February 10th, regular session. February 17th, special school committee meeting. And the March 3rd, Chapter 74 meeting.
Motion made by Vice Chair Collins is our second, please.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gonzalez. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, yes, more than sufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you very much. We'll now be moving to voting items. Yes, Ms. Clerk.
On December 9th, can I, can we go back to that? Because I wasn't at that meeting. I just looked at the notes.
Attorney Phelps, can you clarify how we can correct that?
Thank you. Under Robert's Rules of Orders, not being present at a meeting is not a disqualification for voting on the minutes. There are some individuals who might choose not to vote on them because they, for, for other reasons, but it's not an automatic disqualification. So you can still vote on the minutes, even though you weren't present.
I think, okay, I think she wants to change your vote, though, to abstain probably, or...
Yeah, because I wasn't there at that meeting.
So I, frankly, I'd have to go back to look at the Robert's Rules with regards to how that's done after the gavel is concluded. Usually, if someone wants to change a vote before the chair announces the total. But I'd have to just verify that, so I can step away and, and verify that.
Okay, so why, Madam, thank you, Attorney Phelps. Madam Clerk, why don't you just put a note that there might be a reclassification of that vote for December 9th from Ms. Gresham on a technicality? Okay, thank you. We'll now move to Section Three, Voting Items. A is to approve school committee resolution in support of the Fair Share Amendment. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The unions asked me to bring forward a motion. And we've talked about this in the past for the Fair Share Amendment. Some people call it the millionaire tax, to consider that in Massachusetts, so we'd have an insured funding source for future public endeavors like public education. So in, in the past, school committees across the Commonwealth have endorsed this. So the unions asked us if we'd consider endorsing that again. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak to it. I know this has been a past practice with the different associations.
I, I would say, thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
I'd make a motion to support the resolution.
Motion, motion made by Attorney Murphy and seconded by Vice Chair Collins. I'm sorry, Ms. Phelps? Yeah. Could we have some more explanation on this? Superintendent Warwick, I'd like to know a little more.
Yeah, this, this piece, there's a little piece in your package on it, but it, in other words, this is a, an increased tax for folks who, who are, it's called the millionaire tax. They call it the fair share relative to taxation in the Commonwealth. And the idea would, we'd be able to generate more money annually for public education and transportation. It would be targeted for that. So that's the purpose of it. The unions have endorsed it several times. I know our school committee has talked about it in the past and endorsed it.
Has this had any legway at all with the legislature at all?
Yeah, I believe it has.
It's in the legislature.
Yeah, it's in the legislature.
Yeah. Have they voted for this? Or is this still in...
It hasn't been voted on.
No, no, it hasn't, yeah.
I think they're looking for the support from different school committees to encourage legislature to go along with this.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing done, Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more than sufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. We'll now move to B, to approve the revised, the revised... Ms. Phelps, did you have clarification? Yes, please. This is on Ms. Gresham's changing her vote, please, or adjusting her vote.
I guess I'm pleased to say that my memory at my age was correct, remembering Robert's Rules. The vote can be changed up until the time the gavel is down with the chair then announcing the results of the vote. So basically, and, and one of the notes says, you gotta be quick about it if you want to change your vote prior to the gavel falling. And it's Article Eight in Robert's Rules regarding voting.
All right, so the vote stands then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Madam Clerk, you can, that, that vote stands. Thank you for the clarification, Attorney Phelps. B is to approve the revised 2022-2023 school year calendar. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. We've already given you the calendar once earlier. We were required to change it because the, the state changed the primary date from September 20th to September 6th, which moves it up in the calendar. So we changed that. We've been doing the, on, on primary day, on all the election days, professional development. So you're gonna have a lot of strangers in the school during school time because it can be dangerous. And it's, it's, it's very hard to negotiate the parking, the whole nine yards for safety. So the 20th to the 6th would become a P.D. day, which would technically have been our first day for kindergarten, so we'd bump that to the 7th. And our preschools always start one day later, which would bump it to the 8th. And again, they originally had it scheduled for the 20th. They made a change in it, so that would necessitate this change. So we went with what we were given by the state, but that was subsequently changed. But it's very important on election days for us to do the P.D.s. We're not trying to negotiate all that election traffic and extra people in the building for the safety of our kids. So that's the only change in this calendar. So I recommend approval of the new calendar.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments?
I absolutely will support it. We certainly should do it. I think the state made a mistake moving Election Day to the day after Labor Day, but I'll still support our calendar.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Nayla.
With our school committee's schedule, is it in alignment with this calendar? Or is there something separate? I can't remember how we determine or approve it. So our schedule for our meetings and our speak outs and all of that?
That, that's a separate item that, that comes before the school committee and is set through the school year, but it's not, it's tied during this calendar, but it's not tied to this calendar.
Okay, so we're gonna meet about that later on or discuss that later?
That comes forward every year to the school committee, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nayla. Any other questions or comments?
So, Miss May, may I?
Yes, Ms. Gresham.
So the schools that use as a voting area, they'll still be open, right?
So that, all the schools will actually be open. They'll be doing professional development for staff. But we won't have the schools, we won't have the disruption, all the schools that do have voting, which is very disruptive.
And we've done that, it's been a common practice for a number of years. It's, it's worked, it's worked out well.
All right.
Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, hearing done, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more than sufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. C is to approve memorandum of agreement, M.O.A., for the crossing guard. Superintendent Warwick, please.
There's a memo in your packet on this, and this is something we talked about in executive session. We saw the crossing guard contract. We're looking for a school committee to approve it.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Again, this was discussed in the executive session. Is there any discussion at all? Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is our second.
Second.
Second by, was that?
Mrs. Gresham.
Mrs. Gresham, with these penalty box here, T-bird penalty box. Come down. Motion by Vice Chair Collins, seconded by Ms. Gresham. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more than sufficient votes, this matter passes. Thank you. D is to approve a memorandum of agreement for the security guards, M.O.A. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, we also have a settlement with our security guards, which we discussed in executive session. There's an informational piece in your packet. Recommend approval.
Any discussion? Hearing done, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Collins is our second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Nayla. Roll call vote is required. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, more than sufficient votes, this matter passes. And congratulations to the labor team. And the congratulations and thanks to crossing guards and security guards. We look forward to settling even more contracts very, very shortly. Thank you. Informational discussion items. A is a graduation and dropout rate update, which is just a great success story for any mid-sized urban center across the, the country. But it's right here in the city of Springfield. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, there's a graduation dropout report in your package. I'm gonna go through the data with you. We're also gonna put it up on the screen, so whatever's most convenient for you relative to following along with it. We had very good news on the graduation and dropout rates. Again, some of the best improvements in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so we're happy to share them with you. I'll get them up on the screen so the viewing public can see it as well. We can, thank you. If we go to the first page here. Karen, if we can flip it. So first is the four-year graduation rate. The key is important on the side. You can see the different colors tied, tied to district information, which is the darker blue. The state on the bottom is the lighter blue. The orange is the district without the ZEP schools. The gray is the district with no ZEP, no alternative schools. Most districts don't have the number of kids in alternative schools. We do as a large urban. The other is purely the ZEP schools, the yellow. And again, the state is at the bottom. See the state at the top here in the four-year cohort graduation rate, where they started and where they finished this year. So went from 84.7% to like 89%. Over that time, we've showed considerable improvement. Our goal was to narrow the gap, and we certainly have done that at the district level. You can see, we started at 56.6. We're at 84% this year. That's the biggest improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. If you disaggregate the ZEP and the alternative schools, and we have a large number of alternative schools, a lot of other districts send those kids out of district, and you just aggregate the results for our, our regular comprehensive high schools, you can see how our rate went up from 65.2 to, to higher than the state level, which is really incredible. And we'll show you the school-by-school analysis, but it's rather incredible. We had good news on every front. The ZEP improvement is very positive. The Honors Academy results were absolutely tremendous and really good improvement. So again, narrowing the gap with the state, the biggest improvements in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts on the four-year graduation rate. That's the four-year cohort graduation rate. If we can go to the next slide, it's the five-year cohort graduation rate. So the cohort graduation rates at four-year would mean you start in a given class, you finish four years later. The five-year, if you finish within five years. And you can see that this is for a different year, so it's different data. This is, this goes back to, to 20. But the whole idea is the same. You see pretty significant improvement, obviously, at the district level, one of the largest improvements in the state. But you see the cohorts improving across all the different groups. And again, you see the pattern of the district with no ZEP and no alternative schools actually going right, right up to the state level, which is rather incredible. The next category on the next slide, if we can flip, is the five-year extended engagement rates. This is for students who started in that original cohort and either graduate in five years or are still attending school. So they persist. And again, it's the same trend. Significant improvement. And we're almost right up to the state level when you disaggregate the ZEP and the alternative schools, but significant improvements at all levels. The next slide is the dropout rate. The dropout rate measures something completely different. It's the number of dropouts in a given year. So this is a number of, of students who drop out in that school year. So during that school year, you can see the dip. And we went from 10 in 2012 to 1.9, which is an 81% improvement. Again, that's the biggest improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You can see the significant dip in every bar. And you can see that we're actually under the state when you disaggregate some of the groups. And we're getting right down near the state level. So that's very, very positive. The next slide shows you the same breakouts, but it shows you by school. And there's some noteworthy pieces here. All of our schools obviously made tremendous gains. The comprehensive high schools are all showing over 90% now. One I, I point out, and they're all good, is SciTech, which in 2012, the graduation rate was 39.9%. And this year it was 91.5%. That's the biggest improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for any school, so rather incredible. But all the schools, when you can see the rates, they've just gone up tremendously. It's a great job to all our hard-working folks in the schools. The five-year graduation rate on the next slide shows the same trend and shows you it across all of the schools. Again, the comprehensive schools are doing great. Our alternative schools, of course, are gonna struggle, but they're dealing with all our struggling students who a lot of times need more time and need more time than the five-year rate. But you can see the tremendous improvement across all the schools on the five-year rate also. Five-year extended engagement rate on the next slide, same, same pattern following through. Significant improvement on all levels and really, really encouraging when you look at it across our, our comprehensive schools, but across all of the schools. Dropout rates on the next slide. The dropout rate is, is for one year. It's for that one school year. And you can see the improvements there. So, you know, you can see that the state has improved over time, but not like us. We went from 10 to 1.9%, an 81% improvement. When you break out our schools, you have school, all of our schools are comprehensive schools. They're, they're under 1%, which is absolutely incredible. SciTech, again, is noteworthy in the fact SciTech again is noteworthy in the fact that they started at eleven point six percent in two thousand twelve and down to oh point six percent. So, you know, really tremendous gains. So again, congratulations to all of the staff because this is incredible work. But you see that same trend across all of the schools. The next slide is the four-year cohort rate, graduation rate by subgroup, comparing what you see in the black dots on the top is the state rate. And you can see on the bottom, we have the district with no ZEP. And then in the, the blue and the light blue, and in the two greens, we have the district with no ZEP and then no alternative schools. And again, two thousand twelve and this year. You can see the significant improvement and the gap narrowing with the state. And you can see that we're actually going by the state. But the best news is in the different subgroups. You can see that we're exceeding the state. So for our African-American students, the state's at eighty-four point four. Our, our students in this year started much lower, obviously, but this past year was eighty-nine point six. This, a school system with the highest poverty rate in the state is actually exceeding the state average for that subgroup of students are African-American. You see the tremendous gains. You can see the gains are even beyond that when you have, exclude the alternative schools. Same pattern with our Hispanic Latino students. Great gains exceeding the state for those students across the state, again, with the highest poverty rate. Our EL students, they had the greatest gains of all, as you can see. And again, exceeding the state number for English language learners. That's where the highest poverty in the state. The low income group, that's most of our kids now, but it was calculated differently in two thousand twelve. And the last one, student disabilities, and you can see we went by the state there as well. So tremendous growth in all of our subgroups. We started lower, but we're there now. Five-year rate on the next sheet, you'll see the same pattern following through where we started way below the state. Now we're up to or exceeding the state in most of, most of the categories. And you can see the tremendous growth. And the biggest growth is with our English language learners, which is really encouraging. But tremendous with our special ed students or African-American students, again, exceeding the state. Our Hispanic Latino exceeding the state when you take out the alternative schools. So really encouraging. Next, next slide is the five-year extended engagement rate. And again, again, you'll find that same, very same pattern across, going all the way across tremendous gains and either coming up to the state or exceeding the state in some categories, like our African-American students or Hispanic Latino. And our EL students have climbed right back up and over the state when you have the disaggregated category. The next slide has the dropout rate by subgroup. Now, the dropout rate, again, the same, same way that he works. You have the, the state rate you can see with a black dot. And, and you can see how much better we're doing in the state. So the state is down at one point five. For all students, we started at two oh, and now we're down to oh point eight. So absolutely incredible gains there. But you can see the improvements from the past years when you, when you take out the, the different cohorts of, of our alternative kids for our comprehensive schools. You can see how we're under the state in every area this year, which is rather incredible. So tremendous, tremendous work across every category. Special education, English language learners. Can see that our rate is, is half the states, less than half the states. The next slide actually compares us to the other urban districts with similar poverty rates. We have the highest poverty rate in the state, but the category of schools we've include here to here are the schools that have the next closest poverty rates to ours. You could see the key where we have the district, the district no ZEP, the district no ZEP, no alt. And then if you follow across, you can see all the other school districts that, that are comparable to ours, but don't have our same poverty rate. And as you can see with the district average, we exceed the average in all the other states where we started at one of the lowest, but now we're the highest. And you could see how, how much we are past all those other comparable districts. Again, not our poverty rate, but, but comparable poverty rates, the next highest. Same pattern for our five-year cohort graduation rate. One district exceeded us in one area, New Bedford. But when you follow across, you can see that we exceed all the other groups. And then the last one, the five-year extended engagement rate, as you follow across, you can see that very same pattern. Springfield passed all the other somewhat comparable urbanes and pretty significantly passed it. Well, we started lower, but we, we ended much higher. The dropout rate on the next sheet highlights just how much better we are in the dropout rate than all the other districts. Again, we started at the very highest, but now we're the lowest of all the districts. So very encouraging news. Tremendous job by our, our school staff at every level. Very, very proud of the group. So some of the highest improvements on the next slide, some of the most noteworthy pieces. The improvement in the four-year cohort graduation rate is the highest in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The improvement in the five-year cohort graduation rate is the third largest. The improvement in the five-year extended engagement rate is, is the second largest of any, any school district in the Commonwealth. And the improvement with the dropout rate is the best improvement in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So again, congratulations to the staff. Really shows concerted efforts over the last year, and it's very, very positive news for our community and our districts.
Any questions or comments?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sure.
Superintendent, when we, I think it's like either the first or the second slide. How do we gate, how do we measure the ZEP graduation rate? Are we following those kids as they come out of those schools?
Yes.
Okay.
The same way. We just disaggregate the ZEP schools.
Because under them, they only have two, one high school?
No, they have more than one high school. They have Duggan, they have Honors Academy, they have Commerce. They have several other now, but they wouldn't be on, on this yet. But they will start showing. They have several high schools. They started with just one though, Denise.
So, but these numbers, or I guess I'm, I want to understand. So the numbers that comprise of ZEP are those kids that have matriculated all the way through, even if they've graduated from a non-ZEP school?
So the ZEP numbers would be for the students in the ZEP schools?
Only ZEP school?
Yeah, yeah. It would be for the students in the ZEP schools. Right, exactly. Yep. Calculated the same way. But, you know, in two thousand twelve, we only had Commerce that we're comparing numbers to. Now they have several schools and they have the Honors Academy, and their results were very, very strong.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurst. Any other questions or comments? I'd have to just say again, and, and I'm glad that the Republican has highlighted it with the, the Just story and, and the editorial. But when administration took over from thirteen, fourteen years ago, the graduation rate, it was barely over fifty percent. The dropout rate was hovering over thirteen percent. And we really committed because the foundation for any type of positive aspects moving forward is education. And we committed to improve it because it was unacceptable. And it really accelerated under the leadership of Superintendent Warwick and the rest of the team. But when you look at it, it is nearly thirty-four, thirty-six percent increase in graduation rate and the dropout rate dropping to one point nine percent. More to be done, but it's quite a testament for a midsize urban center in the city of Springfield. And it should be noted, we don't mind constructive criticism, but it really drives me crazy when I hear from some groups that say the prison pipeline is the exact opposite of what's occurring here in the city of Springfield public school system. And yet there'll be groups that will continue to say that. Proof and the facts are right here, right here. So it should be so noted on the zeroing in. And the innovative programs, the funding, the new schools being built, the teachers' efforts, the business community efforts, the students, the families, Superintendent Warwick and the administration, and our school committee on it. So I'm glad that it is being highlighted and that we're going to continue to move forward. Some specific schools, you take SciTech with Kevin Laleen, did a tremendous job. That was thirty-nine percent or thirty-six percent, ninety-something percent now graduating. Eleven to almost twelve percent dropping out at the time. Point, zero point six on that. So the foundation, that's key because it gives our kids an opportunity to move forward. So, you know, we deal with challenges, but when some good news comes out, it needs to be highlighted. We need to be celebrated, and we're going to continue to move the system forward. So to Superintendent Warwick and to your staff and administration, to the teachers, to the parents, to the students, to the business community we partner with, and to the school committee. This is a feather in our cap, but we're not going to rest. We want to continue to move forward. So again, I'm glad that the media is finally starting to, to highlight this. So congratulations to all.
One of the groups that often doesn't get mentioned are the parents and the families. This clearly shows an attitudinal shift, I believe, of, of our community, of the importance of education. I, you know, the parents and the family deserve also accolades for this improvement. It doesn't come without them.
We say that at every graduation. Give a big round of applause to the, the parents in there because we know when the kids make it through, a large piece of that is the parental engagement, the parents that have been behind them the whole way through. But it's an entire community endeavor. It's something we, we can all be proud of and very, very proud of the staff as well.
And again, this, with the editorial today, this is not the, the mayor of the city of Springfield or the school committee. This is the, the paper. Grad rates show schools' success story. We're not going to rest on our laurels. So I'm glad it's finally out there and can really counteract some of the misinformation that continues to be put out there about our Springfield public school system. Any other comments or questions? Again, Danny?
I have a question.
Yes.
But I don't know if it's appropriate for this part of the agenda. It's related to the memo that we received about the graduation requirements for the schools when we give out the listing of their, the expectations of what they should do for graduation day. Can I ask a question now or do I have to wait till later on? Am I okay?
Graduate, yeah, I think it would be, yeah.
Yeah, it's be, it's regarding graduation day. So I don't know if it's okay to talk about it now or at the end of the meeting.
I know the member you talk, memo you talk, the protocol.
Yes, yes.
Students, families, interaction should, you know, how would you, you know, proper decorum and stuff. So maybe it would probably be better under, under new business or?
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Thank, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
And so not to damper the mood because I do think that there is lots to celebrate. And I agree with all of the great success. But I'm wondering, Superintendent, if at some particular point in time, because I'm looking at slide six, if we can delve a bit deeper and just learn a bit more about what's happening in the district alternatives? Because I noticed that steep decline and just wondered.
Yeah, that, that's a great question, Denise. And I should have made that point as I was going through. When you're talking about our alternative schools and some of the schools, the graduation class can be five, six students. So one student can drop or, or increase it dramatically. So when, what we do is we disaggregate it by program. But like at Liberty Prep, you might have three graduates in a given year. So you can drop thirty-three percent with one kid not making it. So the alternatives, I think all the kids who go into the alternatives are severely at risk. And the ones we can get to graduation are rather significant. But when you see that, that drop or that increase, just be aware that that's based on a very, very small number. And so that's why we, we kind of take that into account. And so whether it goes up a lot or down a lot, it, it really is based on a very small number of students. So we can get it right down to the student, but it's a, it's a very small number of students. That's why.
That's good to know. I think it should be, we should probably annotate that because if you're just looking at this, you're thinking, whoa, what has happened?
Yeah, no, that, that, that's based on a very small number of students. So it's not, not anything to be overly alarmed about. But great point. I should have mentioned that when I made the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. It's a good point. And again, a lot of other surrounding communities don't, do not have alternative programs or the robust alternative programs we have. And I bring to the example Liberty Prep, where at times people thought this was a controversial move that we made some fourteen years ago. But we didn't want to throw those kids away. Those are kids that are challenged with alcohol and drug issues. We take them from across Western Massachusetts. And do we get to every one of them? No, we don't. But there's been some good success stories. But unlike other districts, whatever reasons, they do not offer any alternative programs or a robust alternative programs that we do. We don't give up on our kids. We try to give them every opportunity to move forward. And I think that's the right thing to do. If we did not have any alternative programs, our graduation rate would probably be hovering near ninety-five, ninety-six, maybe close to a hundred percent. And the dropout rate would, would probably be below one percent. But that's not the right thing to do. I think Ms. Hurst brings up a good point, but Liberty Prep specifically, those deal, deal with young men and young ladies who had challenges with alcohol and/or drug dependency. But we had, we didn't give up on them. And we take from across the area on that, besides the other alternative schools. And some of those alternative schools, by the way, do have conduits right into our community colleges. Stick and Hoyo Community College, just to make a note on, on, on that. So could take the easy way out and say, it's not our problem, you know, and the, the kid just didn't cut it in our public system and sorry, you're out. We haven't done that. So I, I just, again, it's, it's quite a testament and we're going to keep moving forward.
And the alternatives really do, they focus on student by student. And the big thing there is we're not going to graduate most of those kids in a four-year period because they come in usually behind. They, they've been retained in grade. The idea is to keep them engaged and try to get them there over time. So even if they don't graduate in four years or five years, if they can get to a diploma, it's, it's a big deal. So they're, they're making progress and Rhonda Jacobs and her team does an absolutely fabulous job.
Thank you. Any other question, comments? Good, good discussion, but it's good to highlight the progress being made. Okay. None. We'll move to reports of standing committee. A is student relation parent concerns. Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is building maintenance committee, Mr. Vice Chair Collins.
Yeah, all of our statements, speeches have been received and acknowledged. And some initial talk is our building request is getting favorable.
Yes, I just got something for elect, electronic signatures on those late this afternoon. Legislative contracts committee, Mr. Gonzalez, please.
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. D is curriculum programs committee, Ms., Ms. Hurst.
No.
We got it correct. E is budget and finance committee, Vice Chair Collins.
We did hold the public forum. There was two people who actually came and spoke. Some years we don't have any. And the two, the two people spoke on actually the same item. And that item that they spoke on, we are addressing within the budget. So they were, they were, they got good news when they came to speak.
Thank you, Vice Chair Collins. Any questions or comments? And just a technicality, Madam Clerk, on, on D, if you can go back there and make sure we have the correct designation for Ms., Ms. Hurst, if you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's Mr. Hurst.
Yeah.
I noticed.
Yeah. Yes, just a tech, just a, you know, just a typo, but I want to make sure it's ten. So, oh, thank you. F is the vocational education committee, Attorney Murphy?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
By the way, I have to say, when the, the chapter, I know Attorney Murphy, I go to the chapter seventy-four meeting, which is a tremendous presentation by Putnam Vocational. We had to do it virtually, but it was, it was tremendous. Technology committee, Ms. Sneller, please.
No report, sir.
Thank you. A school safety committee, Ms. Gresham?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Diversity, equity, inclusion, Mr. Gonzalez.
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Reporter, the student representative to the school committee, Nathaniel Claudio is at the Putnam Vocational Tech. He, he, he's been great and he's hung in there. And also times he works, he might be with us today. Nathaniel, are you with us today?
I am. How's everyone doing today?
He's hung in through some challenging COVID times too. Okay. Hey, Nathaniel, how you doing?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Good. Hey, thanks. Different hairdo. Looks good. Yeah, it looks good.
Thank you.
And Barbara's kidding. You don't notice these things. So what do you have for us, Nathaniel?
I'm glad to announce that Putnam has confirmed their prom and our theme as well, but other than that, nothing to report.
And Nathaniel, I want to thank you because you, you know, through some trying times, you hung in there. You were always on the meetings and you bought, and sometimes we're so. Thank you, Nathaniel. Continued success and good health to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions, account for Nathaniel? Okay, thanks. Reporter, the superintendent, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be quick. I included some things in your packet and some articles. And one was the editorial we got on the graduation rate. We also got a front page story in the Sunday newspaper. I think that might have a lot to do with a mayor's persistence. It's what, it's, it's great to see staff recognized for their outstanding work. So thank you, Mayor, on that. Another positive item is a sports update. And I just have a few things for you. You know, our Central girls, as, as the mayor said, are playing for the state title. And we've been to see them several times. They were absolutely incredible. And they beat Wachusett's in the, in the semifinal game. Central went up against BC High, which was rated number one in, in the state and really was ahead the whole game. And we had a couple untimely turnovers at the very end, and they were barely beaten by what's an outstanding BC High team. But I was so proud of our kids. They never gave up and they, they hung in their own way. BC High beat like Malden Catholic, one of the top-rated teams in the state by thirty points. And Central was ahead of them the whole game. They played, kids played a fabulous game. They played their hearts out, just like they did when they won. Because a lot of our kids were our boys' state, state Division One football champions. And they were, they were champions on the court last night in every way, including how they conducted themselves, which I would say was much better than BC High conducting themselves. We have some good news relative some other teams. SciTech boys made the state tourney qualifier. Renaissance boys state tourney qualifier. Duggan girls state tourney qualifier. Commerce girls state tourney qualifier. And the Putnam girls state tourney qualifier. So a lot of success. In wrestling, we have, we have a few, Allstate Desmond McLaughlin from Central Allstate and Danny McLaughlin. There seems to be a similarity there. Western Mass champ, all from the famous wrestling McLaughlin clan from Central High School, which isn't a surprise to anyone. Now it's Danny's brand. So, and then Aral Escalante, Division State champ and Western Mass champ. So from Duggan. So that's very, very encouraging.
And that was, he was the first one ever coming out of Duggan Academy. And that was, he was the first one ever coming out of Duggan Academy.
Yeah, absolutely incredible. As we talked about Desmond, Dan.
Oh, wow.
Then there's some other D-one state wrestlers, including the the two McLaughlins, we have Zadio Aponte and Tyrone McPaul. That also qualified, uh, Division One in wrestling. I also included some great articles, uh, Pop Watson with his commitment to Nebraska. D-one excellent. And go into, uh, to be with Mark Whipple, who used to be the UMass coach. So, uh, and and they recognize how how much recruiting they had done to get him. But watching him on the court yesterday, what an athlete, but what a fine young man as well. Uh, our girls, there's a great article in there on our girls, uh, winning the semifinal. Watched the girls several times, watched them win Western Mass as well, as well as the boys. And they're absolutely phenomenal and play great defense for full court the entire game. There's also an excellent article about how well the boys played against number one Boston College High School, which recruits from the whole Boston metropolitan area. They're not a public high school. So they recruit and they give scholarships. So our central kids, uh, really showed themselves well. I also included a report for you, which is really good news. Our COVID counts, uh, for the last week are down to fifteen on the student count and nine on the staff count. So still going in the right direction. I'm working with Je- Jeannie and Helen to take a look at when it may be appropriate to talk about the masks. And we'll have something for you relative to a recommendation at our next meeting on that. But I think all these, uh, precautions we've taken place have taken hold. They're working.
I have a quick question.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. And I I just on Central too with the the Griffin Boys.
One has a.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Are we testing the water, the wastewater?
Are we testing the wastewater? No.
No. Do we do that, Mr. Mayor?
The wastewater has been te- I'm sorry, Barbara.
With respect to COVID, they send testing of the wastewater?
Water and sewer, I was always continuously doing, uh, a test and reporting it on stuff. So we, I I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of any issue pertaining to that.
Okay, we do, you get a report on, who gets the report on?
Well, I know even when the water, things they'll they'll send out periodically on it, but I'm not aware of the an an issue that, that any issue has arisen that I've been aware of on that.
Oh, okay. All right. So would that report go to the Health Department or who would get that report?
You get from D E P, the Health Department, the the whole runs the whole gamut. But I'm not, I'm not aware of any issues that have arisen pertaining to the, uh,
But they periodically test it for COVID.
I'm sorry.
They periodically test the water.
They have to do constant testing all the time with water and sewer. And they actu- actually issue, they issue reports too. On it. So but I'm not, I'm not aware of any situation pertaining to, uh, uh, COVID that's been brought to our attention.
All right. So that report would go to the Health Department though, right?
I think you'd best to start off right with water, water and sewer. But again, I'm not aware of any situation that has arisen that pertaining to, uh, uh, COVID when it pertains to the water system.
All right. I'm just curious.
And I think, again, yeoman efforts have been made and we're starting to see light at the end of the tunnel. I just want, on the central piggyback that also with, uh, Jaden Bass, who has a number of D-one college off, and of course, the Griffin Boys, Joe and Josiah, uh, moving forward on it. So again, they've excelled, uh, on and off the court and on and off the field there.
Yeah, I was thinking about that last night. Joe has a full boat to B C.
B C already.
I bet most of the kids from B C High don't have four boats to B C. So Joe has a full boat to B C. So you'd be proud of him. And Jaden Bass, our center, he's only a junior. He's also an offensive lineman. He has seven offers.
Yep.
So, uh, the kids are getting really good opportunities at really quality schools and and full scholarships. So it's very.
Joe's, uh, well, Josiah is a junior, so he's already has offers.
And he has offers.
He has offers already. So you parlay your athleticism into academia, which is great. Any other questions pertaining to superintendent's report?
Yes, I have one.
Mr. Gonzalez.
I just, uh, a point of clarification and perhaps Attorney Phelps can answer this. In regards to the mask mandate that we have in place, I know we're speaking in regards to recommendations from at a nursing, from S P S, and also Commissioner Health. If if I'm not mistaken, the power lies within this body in regards to that mandate.
Well, I I think it's a collaboration. Uh, the bottom line is the Public Health Commissioner in every community has the final say. So they can, they can put forth an edict we have to go by, but Helen hasn't worked like that. She wants to collaborate with the team and come up with something that's reasonable for all. So we've done it collaboratively. Sometimes public health departments have acted alone. And other times they'll just let the school committee do what they want. Helen's piece has been a collaborative piece with our team.
Yeah, I I just, and I'm asking this question because I remember at our last meeting, we had spoken that at the end of of March that we would be discussing of this. And I know that, uh, Chicopee Public Schools, I also want to say Worcester Public Schools, they've made this optional in their districts. And and, you know, to be frank, I think there's been several people that have been asking if this can be optional for our students, you know, we're twenty thousand students here in Springfield.
I think you're gonna see very shortly, again, we based all our decisions with um, uh, on the facts, but I get the the trend is very, very good.
Yeah.
I had some teachers, students ask me. So I I think you're gonna be seeing, uh, shortly that the you're gonna see some adjustment pertaining to that. But I said, when I lifted my, the citywide, Helen and I, that people still might feel comfortable wearing a mask and he or she should not be ostracized for, you know, they might have an immune deficiency or they might have a health reason on it. But I I think as Superintendent alluded to, um, I I think you'll see some, uh, announcements coming very shortly. In coordination, continued coordination with Commissioner of Health and Human Services Helen Colton Harris and Chief Nurse Jeannie Clancy. That's what we've done as we flew the plane, as we built it the last two years and and, um, uh, we'll go for it. But I I'd say stay tuned on that. I think that's gonna be revisited probably prior to the end of March.
Thank you. And Attorney Phelps, could you provide clarification in regards to my question, please?
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez, the, uh, by statute, the authority with regards to public health lies with the Commissioner of, uh, Public Health here in Springfield. And she, um, exercises that with, in collaboration with, as the superintendent indicated, with the superintendent and the mayor. But the ultimate authority is with the commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
So when would, when, so for example, Mr. Gonzalez just talked about how like um, Worcester had taken the vote and Chicopee took a vote. So we would we, why don't we take a vote? Is it because Commissioner, um, Colton Harris gets to do it? And so then we don't have to worry about that?
Well, yes, I mean, she would make the recommendation, um, based upon the rates coming down and feeling from a public health viewpoint that, um, and the transmission rate in schools, the science behind it, and make a recommendation to the superintendent. The superintendent then informs or makes a recommendation to you all. I I can't remember, there was a vote with regards to I I believe plans in school, and correct me if I'm wrong, once the mask mandate was issued, um, there then were policies and procedures with regards to all sorts of things, you know, what what could be said on.
We never voted on just masks. It was a a whole comprehensive plan.
Correct, in response to the pandemic.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, but Helen's Helen's preference is to work collaboratively with the body. Certainly she could just make the decision.
Yeah.
And I think that's happened in some communities and where it's a different view, but she likes to work with us and work with our team and give us advice and try to build consensus around the decision. So she not saying one thing and we're saying something else. And then the community, you know, was confused. So, um, but I I think we'll have something before you in two weeks to talk about for sure. Relative to the mask, if these rates continue to go the way they are, and they're going very positively. Boston and Holy Oaks still have the mandates, uh, they have the higher rates. The Worcester Board of Health actually came in and, um, made the decision in Worcester. Um, um, so it was a, it was a different kind of a decision, the way I understand it. But, uh, Boston, Holy Oaks still have money. Of course, they have the the lower vax rates like we do. We still have lower vax rates. They're getting better, but they're not where they need to be. So hence the cautionary piece to this. But the data is getting better and better, and we're getting more and more comfortable. And by senses, we'll we'll have something to discuss with you in two weeks. Great, thanks.
And and I think with regards to that decision, what was left, what I failed to admit was also collaboratively with the unions and and getting, you know, the unions buying with regards to those of masks.
Attorney, very good point. We tried to, again, Ha- Helen and I could make everybody happy from the beginning. But we always based it on the, uh, uh, science, medicine, and public health to try to keep politics out of this, which you've seen politics being played in other areas of the country on it. We based it on that. And when things were okay, these masks come off. The numbers in the schools have come down, uh, substantially, substantially. So that's why I think as Superintendent Warwick indicated, and we work collaboratively, that I think that the relook's gonna come, you know, earlier before the end of, uh, uh, March on this. But again, I re- uh, reiterate, don't ostracize anybody that, for whatever reason, uh, uh, feels more comfortable wearing a mask. Uh, immune, immune deficiencies, challenges, health challenges, uh, on it. So we've tried to base it, and again, didn't make everybody happy all the time uh, on those three factors. So we tried to keep the politics, um, out of it. So, but I have, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, you're right, I have heard some some teachers and so, you know, you know, that, I mean, when when can we start? And I said, well, I think pretty soon you're gonna be able to uh, uh, take the, we were at the games, the last, uh, the double headers, three double headers winner. Superintendent, like, uh, Vice Chair, we had our masks on, we had our masks on and, uh, um, but I think you'll see, but we worked collaboratively. There wasn't, uh, uh, you know, uh, working against each other. So, but I think you'll have that coming up shortly.
And the good news for us is the unions have a lot of respect for Helen also, because they've met with her several times. So when they know the Public Health Commissioner is recommending it for the right reason, they certainly feel a lot better about the decision rather than it being done for other reasons. So that, uh, that helps a lot.
The trend we worked on the city side, we had, we needed to have five consecutive weeks of substantial decrease. And we did it the first time, and then we did it the second time, um, when we had the uptick, uh, on it. And we've increased the vaccination rate that has moved up. It still needs to move up, uh, more. We're continuing to do those vaccination clinics. But I'm hopeful, like all of you, we're tired. I I I hope that we're moving out of this now and, uh, go for, but it has, I'm glad you brought it up because the questions have come up. Uh, when do you think we can drop the masks in the schools?
May I ask additional questions? I know that there are also some vaccination clinics that are happening in the schools that are coming up. Can we have those posted to the website?
Sure.
So that families are aware. I got a phone call from one of the schools. They told me it was coming up, didn't give me a date. I missed the last one. So I just, it would be helpful for parents if we had it posted in one central lies location where they know that they can go look at and find out when they're happening at their kids' schools. It's a lot more convenient than trying to do C V S or any of that stuff.
We still have, I I still have, we update it every day. Uh, I I thank, uh, Billy Baker, my communication director, Molly Shea, we still are running, we still have our COVID page that runs, it gives information. Anything from when it started two years ago to what's available, where you need to go, what you can obtai- what you can obtain. So that's on the city, uh, webpage. And then, you know, stuff kicks to Public Health and and then Zell has a school page there too. And we still continue to have Big Y, uh, reached over a hundred thousand shots that were done. I'm not saying all were Springfield, but they were a great partner, uh, Caring Health Center, A M R. Um, and we we continue B H N, we continue to partner with them also too. And we've done stuff through the New North Citizens Council, uh, Southend Community Center, other venues. So we're we're continuing to do the vaccines. Uh, but I think people still have to realize that we need to get the shot. If you haven't got the booster, get the booster, it works. The numbers have gone down. Spoke with Dr. Kerwak the other day, numbers have gone down substantially at Bay State. They've changed and they're visiting uh, uh, requirements now. Um, so I'm just hoping that this is it. And and we can start moving forward. But I'm I'm sure the superintendent can get that on the, yeah.
No, we'll definitely be bringing that up, but we're working on on it now. And I have a contracts report I also have included in your packet. If you have any questions, Pat Roach could help you with it, or I can.
Thank you. Good, thank you for bringing, uh, school committee, Men Gonzalez, thank you for bringing it up, because that has, the question has been bubbling up and coming up now, when we go. Any other questions, superintendent's report? Okay, hearing done, we'll move to unfinished business.
May I?
Yes.
It's similarly along the same topic. While I recognize that we're moving in the right direction, and I think that that's great, I just really want to urge us to, um, continue to look, and I think Vice Chair Collins said that there was some work being done on it to really look at the remote participation, because while COVID might be going away, we still have other sicknesses, illnesses, and even other commitments, right? Like, I'm thinking about myself today and that I was late because I was, my meeting ran over, I was, Sumner Avenue was backed up.
There was, there was a lot of traffic.
Yeah, and I could have easily jumped on my phone. And I just think that one of the silver linings of the pandemic was that we realized that there's more than one way to do business um, and to keep business and operations going. And so while I don't think that it should be customary that we don't show up to meetings, I do think that if we have an option to be able to call in or to zoom in, you know, for and, you know, for extenuating circumstances, we should at least be thinking about that.
Can you, can you have that policy right now?
Okay.
And I agree, it's exactly for that kind of condition.
Yeah, that would be.
She is developing that policy right now to submit to September.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't want us to forget because I do think that it's just. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez.
To that, um, if I'm not mistaken, I remember we hadn't discussed this perhaps in passing. They're still going to be required to be a quorum in person, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
You got, you have to have a quorum. You you gotta have, you gotta have.
And Attorney Phelps is building all those things at the policy.
Okay.
And only a certain number, I believe, right, that you could use.
I think it was like three, again, unless it was really, really extended. I I'm here. I I mean, I'm here. I I very rarely miss a school committee meeting, so. But I'm glad Ms. Hurst brought that up.
Yeah.
Any other, uh, questions or comments pertaining to unfinished business? Okay, new business, I know Ms. Naylor wants to bring up on graduation protocol, Ms. Naylor.
Yes, I do have a question. A lot of students have reached out about this. And I wanted to address this at our full board meeting. And it's that, uh, question about the caps. I know that we have said in the past that they are not able to decorate their caps, and I just want clarification as to why they're not allowed to decorate their caps for graduation.
That was put in years ago because the school committee had grave questions about the decorum at the graduations. It it had gotten out of control. We had beach balls out and there were some real decorum issues and the caps were all decorated different ways. And we kind of lost our sense of decorum. So the school committee asked us to tighten it up, and we came up with those policies.
Can we revisit that?
Request of the school committee at the time.
I would, I would love it if we could revisit that. I think because we have the school uniforms, they already have to be in uniform all the time. And it would be really nice for them to be able to have at least one day to to do some type of memoriam or expression. And if we vote not to do it, I understand that as well, but I really would like for us to revisit that.
If we, uh, if we do revisit that, we we really have to draw up a policy because you could, you could open up a Pandora's box of if something was really, and I'm not saying, if something was really, really inappropriate and just to to push the ticket, and then all of a sudden it takes away from the, uh, uh, you know, the the this special moment, you're you're graduating and 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 the uh, the protocol. So, I mean, revisit, but you gotta be, you gotta be careful, uh, what you're asking for here at times, because all of a sudden that that would take away. If something was done in a, a non-positive fashion, that would take away from the the reverence of of the high school graduation. And I think when this was looked at some years ago, those situations had arisen. Um, you know, when you have parents and grandparents and others that they want to see he or she cross that stage, get the diploma, be able to cheer for them and uh, but I mean, we can look at it, but I think you're gonna have to draw some guidelines, much as we did with, uh, uh, any type of, you know, with the stu- with the uniforms we have, the masks, I are, we have great kids, don't get me wrong, and but, uh, the masks, I, we have great kids, don't get me wrong, but I'm just saying, if something came up or somebody tried to influence he or she, it just takes away from the reverence of the thing. But I, I don't think there's any issue about looking at it. There was a reason why it was done. I don't know if anybody else or Danny wants to try, I mean, we can look at it.
No, I'll take a look at it.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do agree with Ms. Naylor, because last year, a couple of parents called me regarding decorating their caps. I come, so no, Renaissance did it for years. They used to always decorate their caps. So this was a parent, a couple of parents from Renaissance wanted to decorate their caps last year. So I think we should revisit that.
I was just gonna ask, I mean, is there, I feel like we've seen so many decorated caps throughout the years. We have, right? I mean, honestly, between the nails, the shoes, and the caps, it's kind of highlight. I mean, we're all, we're like, oh, look at this one, look at this one. I mean, it's, I feel like when it was brought to my attention, I'm, I got some of the same calls from, from the schools and the kids advocating for it. I didn't realize that there was a policy. I, I think I called Patty and asked her to share that, because I didn't realize that we had an actual policy.
We have a set of procedures for graduation that was developed years ago. It was before I became superintendent. I was assistant at the time, but some of the graduations had gone out of control. And the school committee at the time really said, tighten this thing up. And Yoland and a team of high school principals took a look at it and come up, came up with a set of recommendations, and that's what the kids have been following, but we can certainly take a look at it. I think some kids have snuck in with the caps decorated, and we haven't caught it, so I think some have slipped by. Yeah, but the other part, part is the staff is a little reticent to wanna start having to monitor that. So if it isn't appropriate, then what do you do? And that whole thing, so that, that was why the recommendation was made, and it could get, we had lost our sense of decorum at one point. But let me, let me grab some staff together and take a look at that.
You can, yeah, we can look at, but the point, if say something was inappropriate that came in the 11th hour there.
Well, then you have to be.
Then you gotta pull, then you have to pull that young man, that young lady out of the graduation line for the diploma. And obviously, that causes an issue with the people that are there to see that young man or young woman. Could just be once, but then it takes away from the whole ceremony. And what is the story on the ceremony? Not that you had 90 something percent graduating, you had one person that was pulled out, and again, we have great kids, pulled out because it was inappropriate what was put forward. And that's what the media will highlight. So, but.
Let me take a look at the staff, and we'll, we'll take a good look at that, yeah. I'll talk to the principals and the guidance departments and see what we can come up with.
I didn't think, I didn't think of that angle when you were, when you were bringing it up there, so. Okay, any other new business?
I do, if I may. So I just wondered if we could just really think about and, and look at the public speak-out protocols. Not only just because of what happened today, but because I think it was two days ago on Tuesday, I got a call about how folks sign up, right? So I sent them the link to, the link that we have on our website. We have a PDF that explains how one signs up, and there's a phone number, and I believe it goes directly to Patty. And so one of the concerns was, why is email not an option? And so I'm just think, I'm just wondering, can we, one, highlight on that document, right? Or work to revise it, where we lay out the actual protocol of what can and cannot be discussed, right? So like, being really clear and making sure that people understand what the guidelines are, so that we're not necessarily having to monitor that once they've already signed up or on the screen or in person.
Attorney Phelps? Well, again, can I just say, we, we tried to be respectful, we tried to indicate to that young lady what the protocol was a number of times, and you saw what the young lady did at the end of that thing. She did exactly what she wanted to do in mentioning names and specifics on it.
I understand that, I'm just thinking though, that for anyone, right? Like, when they go to sign up, they should know right then and there, like, there should be no ifs, ands, or buts about it. Like, this is what the protocol is, this is what the policy, the policy is, this is what you can and cannot discuss. This, these are the two or three ways in which you can sign up. And I also think it would be really helpful, on that document, it only says to sign up by Tuesday. So like, is there a cutoff? Is it by four o'clock, is it by five o'clock? I think that if we lay out the parameters and we're really clear about it, 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 it leaves less room for confusion and, and sort of debate.
Attorney Phelps, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that Ms. McCarthy, in speaking with people who sign up, and there's a reason why, to make sure that the person is a resident, what the topic is, some type of conversation that might not, which, which would elicit information that might not be on the form. So I, I understand that perhaps we can take a look at the form, but I also think the in-person conversation with Ms. McCarthy i- is very important as part of that, to, to make sure that these are really one Springfield residents, and it's a topic that's appropriate for the school committee. I also know that Ms. McCarthy, in every conversation she has with someone signing up, indicates to them in this conversation that there is to be not a conversation regarding any particular student, either by name or by any personally identifiable information to protect the confidentiality of the student, and also the not reading message or conversation with regards to personnel matters. That this is a practice and procedures, policies, public speak-out. And, you know, it, it, it has worked for the, you know, I'd say 90% of the time over my 12 years as counsel to the school committee. Unfortunately, there are some folks that don't follow that. And, but I do know that Ms. McCarthy, in every conversation, indicates the parameters.
Yeah, I didn't know that, I, but I was just thinking, why not also just have it laid out? So in addition to them having that conversation, like, it's there, because it says, like, guidelines to signing up or something like that. So like, being really clear, like, this is what you can and cannot, cannot do.
Sure, I, I, I'm happy to take a look at the form. I do think that it is the form, and again, with a conversation with.
Yeah, absolutely, I don't, I'm not saying remove the conversation with Patty, I think that, absolutely. But I'm just saying, I think it's also helpful to just sort of lay it out in black and white, like, this is what you can and cannot do.
Great, in addition to laying out by voice.
Yeah.
Just a clarification, that's a mass, of, of school committees of Massachusetts filing, and we, I know we, I know Ms. Hirsch, you know, many times represented on the stake, so. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Focus Springfield.
Awesome, thank you for bringing that up. So is that when they get the link, is after they talk to you? Oh, okay, sorry, I didn't know that, I didn't know how they got it, I just figured it was, I, I just figured it was sent. I know that we get our own link, or we got a link when we were on. Okay, I understand, so once you talk to them, then you send them a link?
Yeah.
Got it.
And I wanna commend Focus Springfield, because you've heard, and I'd hope knock on wood, but you've heard horror, horror stories that have occurred across the country with some despicable things coming up in public meetings. So we, you know, we try to shield that. And again, with the, that, that speaker, we respectful, and we mentioned it, I believe, three times, three times. And yet, she specified and then mentioned a name. So that was her, you know, her prerogative.
And no one's better than Patty on the phone, I get to hear the conversations. And I gotta tell you, she does it a lot better than I could do it.
Very kind.
She stays with people, she explains it, she answers all their questions, so they really understand before they come on. And there's a lot you can get out of a conversation that, that can be very helpful, and nobody does it better than Patty. She's so patient, so wonderful.
And I assume at times, Patty, that, that people call, you know, really have an issue and need some help, that they don't even have to come on public speak-out. You bring it to superintendent, go, John Smith, or Mary Smith really has an issue with their grandchild. Okay, let's, the superintendent, the appropriate person contacts John Smith or Mary Smith and said, here's, this is how we can work this or resolve or solve this issue or help out your, your family. You don't hear about that, obviously, because we resolve, we resolve the issue.
I have a clarifying question in regards to something that Attorney Phelps just said. And we had a conversation the other day, and I wanna follow up with just one request. If we could have a, whether it be a working session or an executive session, to get clarification around what the school committee's role and responsibility is as it relates to the four positions that we are supposed to have per view over, such as the CFO position, the assistant superintendent position, the superintendent position, and the sped director positions. And I know that there's a lot of gray area, and I wanna better understand what we are supposed to do whenever people inquire about, you know, what are you doing about this, replacing assistant superintendent, or what have you? Like, those issues are personnel, but they're also positions that we have to have some purview and some involvement in when they're being hired and et cetera. So I want to, I, I really think it's important for us to be able to have that conversation as an entire committee. I just don't know under what platform we would do that, since we don't have a subcommittee or anything like that that speaks to our personnel processes or HR.
I'll set up an executive session, I think, because those positions are easily identifiable, and we don't wanna talk about people in public, I'll set an executive session so that we can discuss that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
I have one more question.
Yes, Ms. Naylor, go ahead.
It was brought up in, in the speak-out, but also I've received several emails, and I don't know that you all have as well, around the camera issue, and I wanted to ask if we could please revisit that in subcommittee, because there are some clarifying things. I think there's a lot of people that understand why we have cameras in the schools, and there's a lot of people that do not disagree with us having cameras in the schools, but there's some language in that contract that a lot of people are questioning, and I think we really need to revisit.
We can, I know there's safeguard language in there, it's also been put in place to protect the integrity and specifics of the policy. And again, this is just for catastrophic event, God forbid, getting the time, information essence, the police or fire, protect, save lives of children, the teachers, staff, period. I mean, you just heard in Dorchester what happened to that teacher and teenager that shot over there. Across the country, last couple of weeks, you, you've had it. I'm not saying we're perfect, but, you know, we really harden our, our buildings and, and our security processes. And thank God, knock on wood, we have not had an issue pertaining, pertaining to that. So can we look at it? But I think some of the entities that are, say, it's the same entities that bring up the prison, the pipeline, using misinformation all the time. And I think, you know, when, when you talk to the majority of parents or families out there, they wanna make sure that their kids are, are safe. And there has, we did revisit, we did do committee meetings, Attorney Phelps can speak about that. We put in specific language and the criteria and the parameters of that use of the, of the cameras. Am I correct on that, Attorney Phelps?
Yes, Mayor, there are parameters with regards to an emergency situation, and then separately with regards to whether or not a request is made to access as part of a bona fide police investigation. In the example of a, a teacher's pocketbook is stolen, and there might be video of where in the hallway. Hence, as you know, there are no cameras in classrooms, it's hallway footage and exterior of the buildings. So that can be very helpful in trying to investigate a, a bona fide police matter as an investigation. So there are those two areas, an emergency situation, such as, God forbid, Sandy Hook, an active shooter situation, which will be of great benefit to protect the students and staff in the building if real-time access can be achieved to know where exactly the shooter is, or where the fire is, or whatever is the emergency situation.
I have to tell you, sometimes a few things that I, I mean, the majority are supportive of, but the few things that I get with the emails, they're from people from out of town, out of town, that, you know, looking to make, looking to make an issue. I mean, Brendan's nodding his head right now on it, and I think the testament here is that we just reported on graduation rates and dropout rates going down significantly, and graduation rates increasing significantly on it. We heard the school committee members who were not for this, and we met, we revised certain things. And again, I, I, I hope and pray that we never have a situation that we just faced in Dorchester, high, high school in Dorchester, where the teacher was shot, and a student was shot. And last couple of weeks across the country, you've heard about shootings occurring in, in, in high schools and in middle schools. So, you know, being proactive, can we revisit it? But I, I'm getting sick and tired of certain groups, whether it's the prison, the pipeline, or the same groups trying to make issue on here, that we're trying to keep our students, our teachers, staff, safe. Safe, and, and the proof's in the pudding. Nothing has occurred here in the city of Springfield pertaining to that. So, you know, when we look at it, can we look at it? But I, I don't think that's gonna change, definitely not gonna change my mind, and.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So I just wanna agree with Ms. Monroe Naylor, and I know that the conversation that we had almost a year ago has not, has not necessarily changed many minds from how they voted on that particular day. And so I understand that we probably fundamentally disagree on, on this issue. However, I have to say that as a school committee member, as a parent, and as a resident of this city, there is not one day, one week that goes by that I don't think about how far, the, the far-reaching implications of that policy. And yes, I understand you don't believe in the school-to-prison pipeline. I understand that we have great graduation rates, but there are so many other variables and dynamics that we have to think about. And quite frankly, that whole situation, that whole meeting and how they came to pass, happened so quickly. I remember specifically asking, like, what's the impetus to this? Like, how did we get here so fast? Like, considering the landscape at the time around police, police, policing and community policing, like, there was no opportunity for us to have a real thorough, in-depth conversation, dialogue, discussion about what this policy truly meant and how it affects people. I have served on the school committee for, for 12 years, and I remember being on the school committee when Sandy Hook happened. And that was never a part of a possible intervention. We know that having cameras in schools does not stop shootings. I mean, there are cameras in grocery stores, it doesn't stop shootings. That is not, while everyone wants people to have safety in the school building, I want that. I have two boys that attend school in an area that's considered one of the highest crime areas in the city. So of course, I want nothing more for them to be safe. But I also recognize the damage that some of this policy can have on not just them, but their peers overall. And so I do think that at the very least, we need to be able to have a real thorough conversation around what are parts of this policy that can have detrimental, long-term effects on our system and our kids. And that, at the very least, should be able to be considered and voted by the body to at least have that conversation, to revisit that particular policy.
Just a point to clarify, Attorney Phelps, when you talked about doing an investigation and, and trying to look at, that, that's not lifetime, by the way, and that is. that, that's not lifetime, by the way, and that is, the police department may request footage at a particular time. They don't just, they don't automatic access. They have to request it. Our safety division has to first review that, make sure that there's an inconvenient students rights compromise and make a decision as to whether that is turned over or not. Isn't that the way?
And it is never turned over. It is a, an ability to view the footage. Only after safety and security has been notified that they are investigating. If I'm, give the example again of a pocketbook being stolen and it was left in hallway B. There might be then, there would be a request by the detective bureau to see if there's any footage on that particular day in hallway B. Bill Baker would have to approve it. The supervisor of the detective has to approve it. And they can view it then as part of a bona fide investigation. That is very different than a real-time active shooter in which seconds count. And Sandy Hook, the studies that I've read and looked at and looking at what could have been done to save lives is if had they have known where the shooter was, it would have saved little children's lives. And so, you know, Springfield is not alone in having real-time access in a, an emergency situation. There is, has to be approval by supervisors and you know, there's, there's evidence across the country of school systems that have initiated this because seconds were found to have, would have made a difference at Sandy Hook.
Are there any other districts in the Commonwealth that have it?
Yes.
Who can we find out who and what their policies look like? And what exactly their, their policy is?
And that was part of when I was doing the research for it, did look at other policies. But so I, I don't know, since this was done a while ago, I'll have to look and see who has them. I know that technology is not available in all school districts. So, but I'd be happy to get that information of the places that.
But there are other districts.
That, that's my understanding of whether or not they're operational or whether or not they've been expanded or they're still the ones that I looked at from before. But I'd be happy to get back to you.
And just one other clarifying point. One of the speakers held up a flyer which would lead the general public to believe that the police have access to view
Terrible.
This lifetime at all times. And that is absolutely, the public needs to know that's absolutely not true. There is no access to our cameras routinely. It's only if there's an emergency situation, even then they have to ask permission. So to let people to bring, lead the public to believe
Agenda.
That these cameras are out there and the police can view them and go click in at any time of the day and view them. That's a complete falsehood.
Falsehood, agenda, same group that says prison, the pipeline. And I, knock on wood, I don't want to be confronted by a parent nor of, of, of a student or parent of a teacher saying, why did my son or daughter get shot? Why did my son or daughter who's a teacher get shot? Why didn't, why didn't you do, why didn't you do everything within your power to make sure that building was safe and secure? I'm not saying we're perfect, but knock on wood, we have not had the incidents that occurred that had been occurring just last, this week, Dorchester High occurred there, student and teacher being shot. So there are checks and balances in it. It's been clarified, but I, I saw that, that flyer there. That was complete fabrication, completely wrong. Group trying to drive an agenda. And I think all of us in the school committee are good to question, constructive criticism. Want to make sure that our students, our faculty, the staff and administration of schools are safe. And even if when you do that, you could have something, God forbid, happen on it. But I think a lot of things did derive off the tragedy of Sandy Hook. And a lot of questions were asked on there. We hardened our buildings. We upped our technology. You know, we've been able to do real-time crime analysis. So that's the intent, but I'm glad Vice Chair Collins brought that up. Because that flyer was absolutely wrong that saying that you could at any time, they're spying on our, our kids. That is not correct. So I, I appreciate the, you know, concern, but you have two groups that have an agenda that they're trying to drive. And I'm going to say my piece and if they don't like it, that's their prerogative. But this is, these are the facts and it's about keeping our and as Attorney Phelps indicated, God forbid a catastrophic event occurs. Seconds mean saving of lives or loss of lives for emergency responders on that. So.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I agree that we should revisit it because it was a rushed situation, I feel like. So revisiting it would give the public a better understanding, also us a better understanding of the policy. Can we?
Yeah, fine. We can, we can re, we can put it back out there. It's been, we've put it out and, you know, it has been put out there when this was going through. It has been clarified. I mean, what these groups decide they want to take in or not. And then with the media, but re-cla, you know, re-clarifying as Vice Chair Collins said, that flyer was absolutely ridiculous. It was false. It was incorrect. It shows the group is trying to drive an agenda on a false narrative. And I'm sick and tired of it. There's something wrong, it's, it was a false narrative.
May I, may I interject? I wanted to just say that part of the reasoning of why we want to revisit it and similar to what Mrs. Gresham just said is that the way that the contract is written, that's exactly what it says. That's the messaging that it's sending to the public. And so with the clarification that Mr. Collins just presented, I didn't understand that from reading the policy nor being a part of the meeting. And so I think that if I didn't fully understand it and I consider myself to be one that do my research and I listen and I ask questions, then I'm not surprised that there are people out there that think that that is the messaging of that particular policy. So I think that is more the reason why we need to revisit it and why it needs to go back into legislation and contracts for a review. So that we can all get clarification and wherever there are gaps of, of, or loops where there's, where, that is causing this miscommunication, then we can clarify those because there are certain things that I did not understand justified or warranted to be an emergency as to why somebody would tap into the computer and then have access to whatever the cameras, you know, were in that building. So I think, yes, we absolutely should revisit it. I, I don't think that or know that there would be a different outcome. But it at least gives us an opportunity to fully comprehend. And for families who were not paying attention because they were so caught up with COVID to then now pay attention and say, okay, now I get it. Now I understand. And if they have questions, then now we can answer them.
I have no issue with that at all. Ms. Naylor, I'm just going to point out to you that that same group that says the prison, the pipeline, after we've given out updated information constantly on graduation rates and dropout rates will continue to put out information dating back to 2008 and 2010. Am I correct Superintendent Warwick, in the, in the meetings we had? And the retired Assistant Superintendent Lydia Martins will tell you, the information is given to them. And they will still use informations, information from 10, 12, 13 years ago to put out their false narrative on it. So if that helps, they will not change. They will not change on that. But if it helps educate the rest of the public on it. I, I didn't understand we get constituent calls, but people are happy at times that we, we're taking all the safeguards we can to keep our students, staff and teachers safe. But, and I'm sure that they'll come back and counteract the graduation and dropout rates too, saying that, you know, it's not so. Because it doesn't fit their narrative. So, but, you know, that, that's fine if we want to re-educate people.
The things that I just explained actually are covered in plain language in that contract. They, they're in there. Maybe, you know, we can have the contract sent to you again so you can review it, but they are in there.
I've read it several times. Can I just say, in response to what you're, to what you just said, Chris, right? And to what you said earlier. And to what this body has done for other circumstances. So whether it was COVID or even right now, take the budget, for example, right? At the very least, let's be able to help spell this out clearly for the public so that they understand. I'm, I'm not worried about, or my purpose isn't around changing the minds of this particular body that the mayor references. Our focus should be on educating the public because we owe them that much, especially because they entrust to us their children day in and day out. And we have a responsibility to the adults that work in that school. So at the very least, we have to be able to share with them what is in this contract and what exactly it means. To hand over a contract or to say, here's a PDF or here's the link to the contract, go and read it. That's not enough. And if we really want to change the narrative and make sure that it's accurate and that people truly understand it, then at the very least, this is, is an important enough of an issue for us to be able to really spell out for people. It, it's just not enough to say, here's a contract and, and, and go, and go read it. I mean, I, I I, I'm sure I, I walked away with tons of questions from, from that contract and I remember that meeting. And I'm sure that the average resident is going to walk away and say, what is this? What, what does this mean? And I didn't see the, I don't know what flyer you all keep referencing. But if Ms. Mailer just said to you, well, that's what I understood, then imagine how many other people understand that. Outside of just that quote, that, that particular group of individuals. And over the last year, right? Because I think it's going to be a year that we've voted on this. I've not gotten one email or one call or one person, one encounter in the community where the person has said, thank you for, you know, thank you, or we're happy that you all have implemented that policy. It's been counter that.
I have actually had a number of people.
So have I.
Putting those, putting the availability, if there's that kind of a situation to have that. I've had a number of people come to me and say that that was a good thing to do to keep our students safe. I haven't had the issue, I haven't had people ask about when they can look at it as much. That people haven't questioned that quite as much that I, to me anyway. Although whenever somebody says it to me, I'll always go on and further say, I understand though, that's only during a very specific emergency type situation that that's available. But if me, if some people don't, there was actually, I mean, it took about a year and a half to develop that contract because believe me, initially the, the request was, they wanted full-time access to everything and every.
And we cut it down.
And it was, and it, it evolved and I, and I do have to give the current I better use the right title, superintendent, I guess. She actually forced her department to get real and go seriously at this and look at it. Because the requests prior to, prior to Commissioner were outlandish. They were something that none of us could have lived, could live with.
All I can say is San Francisco School Committee. See, there, we want to discuss, that's fine. People came in on certain things and, and kept me, they're, they're no longer there anymore. So I want to, we want to put it out there, that's fine. But I, I just, I think we're pretty open on the reasoning and when it would be used. And with the safeguards on it. And I just see again fringe groups that are looking to drive an agenda, put a false narrative out there. And I, I just don't want to be dealing with a parent and or a teacher, something happening and say, why didn't you do more? Why didn't you do this? Why did you take that away? And if people don't like that, then, you know, they have their recourse with me. But I thought we put a sound policy in effect, knock on wood, we have not had any type of tragic or catastrophic situations occur to our kids. Our teachers or students and staff and as Vice Chair Chris Collins indicated, the flyer was absolutely wrong.
I didn't see the flyer, but what, what did it say? Or what, I, I didn't.
The flyer that the individual held up, I had seen a copy.
They were handing them out at the schools.
And it said, do you know that they can view your children live in schools?
Yeah.
Live view your children. That would lead the average person to believe that that's a, they can view, police can view people at any time that they want to. It didn't say anything about during an emergency situation. It just said, do you know that people, your children can be viewed? No, it was misleading at best.
So that's why we need to revisit, revisit it, just so people get a clear understanding.
We probably do need to do some communication about what is in there. And I, we probably do need to do some explanation about what is actually in that to, to correct the misinformation that's out there. I, I don't disagree with that. We probably do need to do some communication around it.
Yeah. So is that a yes, we're going to review it, revisit it or what?
I think we need to do some communication that's around it. Revisiting it means, first of all, it's a contract that we'd have to, there's two parties too. This is all in a contract. So that brings up a different part of it. But if there are, if there's misinformation about what's in there, I think we should put out what's in that contract.
What's the timeframe on the contract?
I, I don't know.
Let me, let me ask you now, as, as it states there, no matter what's put forward, I would, I would, I shouldn't, you wouldn't support it anyways, anyway. You wouldn't support the vote anyways for cameras in schools.
I definitely wouldn't support it. I, I mean, I wouldn't support it, but I think it would be helpful to have a better understanding of it. And I think it would be helpful. So first of all, let me back up and say this. I wouldn't support it as.
You would, you would not support it.
No, what I'm saying is I wouldn't support it as it, as it stands right now, which I didn't. But I do think that if we're able to engage in some dialogue and open dialogue and have community input and be able to have a better understanding of what exactly it entails and some real concrete assurances, then I, it may be something that I would look at. And I think it's also worth having Melinda Phelps go back and bring us information around what other districts have used it. What do their policies look like?
We could also put out information or through the public, through the media indicating most, dispose of most questions asked and just identifying those. This is the answer to that question. Can, are the police viewing your children all throughout the day? No. Is this being used only for catastrophic events on it? Yes. Is this being used if a, a crime has occurred and, and there's requests on how you were able to obtain that video? Yes. I, I mean, about a re-education, that's fine. I think that there's a point here that people are looking to revisit, to vote this down. And Mr. Gonzalez, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just want to say that I'm in support of us, you know, putting out the information as you were alluding to, Mr. Mayor, just because there's been several questions and misinformation. And I know the, some of the tragedies with public policy are that no matter how much the right information gets out, there are those that are going to twist it. For example, I, I don't know if my other colleagues here on the school committee received the emails of surveillance in schools. The word surveillance is very misgiving. That someone is sitting on Pearl Street watching our kids. That, that's what that means. So I mean, while I'm in favor of us putting out communication, creating understanding as a body, I don't know if that's going to sass, you know, satisfy the needs of, of some of the people. Because I don't know, you know, if they're going to continue to just believe what they've believed, but I'm certainly in favor, Ms. Hurst, of looking at it together to create understanding and then also putting out communication, something similar to what the mayor's saying, like frequently ask questions and just clarifying it. And once we've put out the truth, there's really, I don't think anything else that we can do in regards to that. But I think when we say to visit it as well, I think in the, in the But I think when we say to visit it as well, I think in the, in the subcommittee, Mr. Collins, correct me if I'm wrong, would that then open up to negotiate? We just want to create understanding. I don't think it's a subcommittee matter, but rather something that we just want to have session about us as a collective.
Well, you could, a discussion about within a subcommittee about what that contract is and what it says and doesn't say certainly could happen. That's not asking to. One thing that we all should know and the public should know is obviously the police department understands the contract because there's never been a request to look at live cameras in the building. There's never been requests.
And that should be a testament to the, knock on wood, the, what we've done to keep our schools safe and sound now. Do things happen, you know, that go on to, but keep them safe and sound from a really negative violent attacks, shootings, stabbings, God forbid. Not one. Why? Because we've been proactive. We've been proactive. So I think the school committee man Gonzalez is right, no matter what you say to certain groups or entities. And I wouldn't be surprised even with this out with the graduation rates and the the dropout rate success that we've had, that media don't play that that's not so. And they'll still use a prisoner pipeline and they'll still say that there's surveillance going on in our schools, which is not so on it. So sometimes you got to push back a little bit. Sometimes you got to push back with the facts. If something's wrong, that's a different story. That's a different story. Sometimes you got to push back on these false narratives that are being put out there. And I think it wastes the times it takes your, our eyes off the ball about what we need to continue to, and I go back, I hearken back to the school committee in San Francisco. Where the certain issues that they thought was important, the parents didn't feel that they were important at that time and they had a recall and they voted those members off. Concentrating what was more important and moving the district forward. I'm not saying this, I think we have a good school committee here. But that's what I'm saying at this point in time. You have agenda driven groups, fine, goes on both sides that see something, put a false narrative out there, try to promote it for their, for their own cause, not the overall good cause of the kids. And I'm sick and tired of it. And whether people like it or not, I'm going to push back and I'm going to continue to push back. But I feel, we feel is right for our, the city, the residents, the schools, our businesses. I know, I know we can't make everybody happy, gone through for two years of COVID right now. But you know, that's how I feel. But I think the reeducation, Ms. Hurst, I think you're right on that because maybe we need to dispel some false narratives and maybe it could be as simple as you said, Mr. Gonzalez. Some entities, a couple entities have said this, or this person said that. Is that so? No. What does it do? This is what that does. But even then, when you do that, they'll still put a false narrative out there.
I have a clarifying question. Is there a policy that is in alignment with the contract? Because I know that we're saying that the contract has been signed, we can't undo the contract, but is there a policy then that speaks to how that is implemented?
Attorney Phelps, could you please clarify that once again? Thank you.
So I think Ms. Naylor, your question is, has there been a school committee policy that was adopted after the contract or in conjunction with the contract? And the answer is no. The procedures to be followed are in the contract that the police have to follow, that school officials have to follow with regards to any access to video footage. So it's embodied, embedded in the contract itself.
So they get access to the cameras if there's an emergency. But anytime there is an emergency, doesn't mean that they will necessarily get access.
I'm sorry, part of it's the echo in here, but.
What I'm saying is that if the police department feels the need to look at the surveillance because it's an emergency, then they look at it. But if they don't deem it to be an emergency, then they're not necessarily going to go into the system to look for footage or what have you. I only say that clarifyingly because one of the concerns is about shootings and there was kids and the property of one of my kids' schools threatening to shoot up kids in the school and the police were called and it took them almost 30 minutes to get to the building. So I'm thinking that that would have been a justification or a time that we would have actually had them request to look at the footage to see the kids that were outside of the building.
So that would be exterior cameras as opposed to interior? And there's two very different procedures for exterior. Versus interior.
Which is part of that contract. There's the internal and external cameras that they would have access to. Correct. According to that contract.
But under very different circumstances.
Which, which again, this is why I'm saying that I have a problem with the clarification of it and why I'm asking that there be clarification in the lingo because from my understanding, based on the way that it's written, that would have been a situation that immediately police would have looked into, seen who the kids were, found out who they were, came immediately, handled the situation. And it took almost 30 minutes for somebody to respond to that call.
Camera already.
So it's not doing what it's supposed to do and that's my concern. So I think that maybe on the policing, there's also education that needs to happen. But the police officer's response was, what am I supposed to do? When they actually did show up. And my son was terrified.
Well, how do you know that that on an exterior camera, which is a different situation here, how do you know that that wasn't, that looked into anyways? And subsequent follow up on an investigation that's going on, interior is completely different. It's really a tight agreement on the interior. Because we've used, we've used exterior cameras. I think at the older Berry some years ago helped us solve a murder that occurred there in the evening time.
You know, I can't comment on, I don't have enough information on this specific instance, but clearly with regards to exterior cameras, they may be accessed at any time, but only by the then current members of the real time crime analysis staff and the video analyst and with approval by a supervisor. So you know, you reference a timeframe. I don't know if a call was ever made to request it or what the decision was, but there is a procedure to safeguard access to even to exterior cameras. So that it's the real time crime analysis folks that can only do it through their passwords.
Right. So I'm just pointing out some of the, some of the gaps that I've seen and experienced myself. So I'm not saying what somebody told me, saying an experience that I had with my own child. And so part of my frustration and the reason why I'm trying to do it in a very dignified way, but and did not want to bring up that particular issue is that there are similar parents that feel the same exact way with their concerns. And as voted members of a body, an elected body, if our constituents are asking for us to do something, then we should at least consider what they're asking us. And if they're, all they're asking us to do is revisit the policy, then I think we revisit the contract or we revisit the policy. I don't think it should be drawn out or a conversation or make anybody feel bad because maybe they didn't understand a certain word or a certain way that it was written. But it has to be clarified because our constituency is asking us to do that. And we owe them to that as elected officials. So I've done my part of requesting it. If it gets done or not, that's not my problem. I've done what I was supposed to do. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other questions or comments? Another healthy discussion, which is good.
Sorry, Mayor, if I could just, just say a couple of things. I just think that as I've, as I've said before at the meeting that we had on the vote on this policy and the contract and also, you know, we just did have an election in November and numerous forums and debates and comments from constituents, this was an issue that came up. And I think that anytime there is a balance between security concerns, which clearly many of us have and privacy concerns, which are totally legitimate. You know, there should be a healthy debate and that's what I said at the time of the vote that we took on this. And that's what I've said on the campaign trail. And I think that there are a couple of things that, that I would like to say. And one is that, you know, when we get closer to the one year anniversary of the implementation of this policy, if there is any inappropriate behavior by the Springfield Police Department, which apparently is one of the concerns here, then we should be able to look at that data. And we could determine whether or not the policy was implemented correctly, whether it was used correctly and whether there was any adverse outcome for any of our students or our young people. I think that is perfectly rational to do, to make sure that our policy is being implemented correctly. And on the other hand, if in fact, we find that there are no abuses or any problems with the implementation of the policy, I think that maybe that shows that it, that it is a good policy and it is working to keep our students safe. And I just, just one last thing and not to belabor this point, but you know, during some of the forums and the debates that we had running up to the election, there were a lot of comments about this and there was disinformation, I think, quite a bit of it, as a matter of fact. For example, using the word surveillance, which can be easily misconstrued by, by folks. But there was a gentleman at one of the forums who asked me a question about data. And he was very respectful and it was a very appropriate question. And I don't think I did a very good job of answering it. But he asked about data and what kind of data that we relied on when we implemented this contract and this policy. And my, my answer was that we don't have data at the moment because the policy hasn't been in place. But I, I realized that afterwards, that's not really what he was asking. He was asking about data prior to the implementation of the policy. And so I have reviewed this and I'm not going to go through it tonight. Because it is quite, there's quite a bit of information and data out there, very comprehensive about firearms in schools and school shootings and various other types of shootings that happen in and around schools. Gun violence is how it would be phrased in these studies. And I just, without getting into the numbers, but I'm happy to provide this. And if we're going to continue this conversation, I'm, I think it should be aired publicly. The numbers are disturbingly shocking. The increase in the number of school shootings and gun violence in and around schools and other public places that are adjacent to schools is, as I said, disturbingly on the increase. And that is a fact. That is a mathematical fact. And I have some of the numbers, I'm happy to share them. But just from August 1st of 2021 until December 31st of 2021, there were more shooting, school related shootings and gun violence in schools than there has been in any five month history of the United States. And the numbers are up in the hundreds of percent. So this is a real problem. And how we deal with it is up to us and it's not an easy vote to take. It's not an easy question to answer. I think we, the mayor is correct that we are lucky that, that it hasn't happened here. But I don't think that we can say it won't happen here. And the question is, will we be prepared if it does? And that's what bothers me. That's what I look at when I think about my children who attended the Springfield Public Schools and my youngest son who still does. I think about their safety, but I think about all of our children's safety. And that is what's paramount to me about this policy. Should there be a tweak in the language? Can we do a better job at communicating it to our constituents? Absolutely. But I do think that we cannot ignore the data. And, and hopefully moving forward, we can look at the data and make a reasonable and rational decision about how best to protect our kids and our employees. Thank you.
Could I also just add, and I, I appreciate what you just shared, Peter, but I also think it's important that if we're going to look at data, that we look at data holistically. And so while we know that school shootings have gone up or that gun violence has gone up, we also know that black and brown children are disproportionately arrested, shepherded into our criminal justice system by drastic numbers, right? And so if we're going to look at data, we have to look at all of the data. We, we can't just pick and choose the data that's going to benefit one argument and not the others. So if we're going to look at data, we have to look at all of the data. All of the data, and we have to be really honest with ourselves when we look at the data and we have to look at the demographics as well of the city and the student.
I thought that's what I just said. I mean, we can look at how the policy was implemented over the course of the last year, which is a fairly good sample size to get started with. And we know that 85% of our kids are black and brown, including my youngest son. So, you know, I mean, that, that's what we certainly absolutely should look at that. I mean, that, that, I thought that's what I just said, or at least if I didn't, if I didn't say it correctly, that's certainly what I meant. Is to diffuse potentially the concern of some folks in the black and brown community about the implementation of this policy and the, and the perceived mistrust of the Springfield Police Department. We can attempt to teach folks or, or make sure that they understand all the facts. They may never come to agreement. We may never come to agreement. But certainly we should look at the data. But I mean, obviously if 85% of our children are black and brown, you know, I mean, it, it, the data is going to show that the vast majority of folks that have issues are black and brown because the vast majority of our students are black and brown. So I mean, but so far as I'm, I know, I, I don't think there's been any problems with the implementation of the program as far as I've heard. I mean, I know people don't like it and, and are advocating against it. But I don't think there's been one instance in which a black and brown kid has been that, that I'm aware of, has been arrested and sent to prison. I mean, that hasn't happened as far as I know, but we need to, I agree 100%. We should look at the data.
I think just the point of clarity, I asked Superintendent Warwick at one time, a number of years ago, the arrests numbered 300 and something, I believe, 300 and something. We worked very hard. I think that's, and that's if it's a situation where warrants an arrest or it was down to 30 something, Dan?
It was down to maybe.
And that's true, that's true, Ms. Gresham's Public Safety Committee on it. So you were looking at some years ago, 300 and something arrests being made in our schools, which is matriculated down to, I think it was 30 something. That's the last gap that an arrest has been made for whatever situation occurred or warrant or on that. That's a tremendous decrease. So that was the last option. If a crime were warranted, a recipe made, three, it was, I think it was 383 or something like that. I'm going off the top of my head. Knocked down to 30 something, I believe. Out of a poppy, out of a school population of, I think, time 25,000 students. So and that, we don't want to see that happen either, but I mean, so there's another area where it has gone down tremendously because of the programs and the shifts that we've put in there. I mean, when parents want their kids safe in our schools. I know we get calls at times saying, if they feel the student is not safe, why is this person in my classroom? You, I know you get those calls because I'll get the calls too. So it's, you know, it's a balancing act. And I think the reeducation is, but I think Attorney Murphy's point well taken. It's becoming, and maybe we're getting, and we shouldn't get used to it. Every other week, every other week in the country, there are school shootings going on. We can't get to the point where this, well, it's commonplace, it's bound to happen. BS, we got to do everything in our power here. So when you look at the points again, 380 something arrests some years ago, maybe 30 something arrests now. Graduation rates that were hovering at 50%, 13, 14 years ago, 86% now. Dropout rate 13 to 14%, 1.9%. Vice Chair Collins indicates again, there hasn't been one call pertaining to the situation of this event we have, God forbid a catastrophic event happens on it. So reeducation, fine. I know there's some groups. I know there's group, some groups, fringe groups that want to push for a vote to vote this out.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Gresham.
No, you said the arrest rate is down from 300 and something years ago. Even though they get arrested, that follows them. That arrest follows them. When they get arrested and and put into jail or whatever, it follows them throughout their years.
That's not necessarily so in a juvenile, depending on what the arrest is for, not necessarily so on that adjudication on it. Now, if an arrest occurs because of violent activity, it occurred.
It follows them.
Well, you had a violent activity that occurred.
Yeah.
At that point in time. I mean.
When they're arrested in school, it follows them.
But if you're in the midst of a violent activity where you're perpetrating harm to a teacher, to a staff member, to another student, I mean, I just could go back to Reverend Theodore Brown. God rest his soul. God rest his soul. That was before my times, Mayor. That he got stabbed to death in school.
Yep, I remember.
Yeah, but Mr. Mayor, we also had a kid at Commerce who was who was literally jacked up. We had another kid at KIY that was thrown across the hall. I mean, things, these these unfortunate incidents happen, and they only don't happen on one side of the spectrum.
I understand that. And they both both situations have been, when I sum up, both situations have been dealt with, have been dealt with. I'm just talking, we're talking about catastrophic events, God forbid occurring in our school system. And again, having those, as Attorney Murphy said in Vice Chair, having those flyers put out there that your kids are under surveillance in the schools. That's not so. That's not so. So who's trying to drive a narrative, a false narrative and agenda here on it? So but it's a good, healthy discussion, and I appreciate everybody's viewpoints on it. And go ahead.
If I could, I absolutely 100% agree with what you said, Denise. There are, there is absolutely a disproportionate amount of black and brown children who get involved in the criminal justice system. And anybody who doesn't believe that's got their head in the sand, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, it, I think it's so ultimately clear, if you look at anything. I don't think that there's been one child, no matter whether they're black or brown or white, that has been arrested due to this policy. That's that's what I'm talking about, is this particular policy. That that societal issue you bring up is absolutely correct. And anybody who doesn't believe that, I have trouble with their sanity. They got their heads in the sand. But I don't think this policy has contributed to that. I don't think we've had anybody who's gotten put into the criminal justice system because of our the cameras in the schools. So I think we need to look at the issues too, for what they are.
I appreciate you saying that, and I appreciate you acknowledging that. I also I also just want to say, like, how do we know that? Like, so maybe not right in this second, but it is a fear, right? So if we're looking at things from a systemic perspective, one of the things that that is out there with respect to the research is, what are some of the things that contribute to that occurring? And so what we're hearing from constituents in the community, you know, the ACLU, other organizing bodies, is this could be a contributing factor to that. And so why would we add something that would contribute to something that can have such such implications? What else could be done? What else could we be doing to gain the same or to meet the overarching goal of safety? Is that the only intervention or measure that can be implemented?
I.
Mayor, could I say?
I agree that some people might say that this could be a contributing factor to that, especially if they don't understand what the cameras, how the cameras are being used. I can see where they would come to that conclusion. I think I, actually, I'm going to, we're going to, I'm going to ask Attorney Phelps, let's have Bill Baker verify for us. Have there been any requests to you, the footage that has ended up in any type of, let's find out. And I think we need to know that. And certainly, if someone doesn't understand this camera issue, I can see them saying this could contribute to it because they don't understand how they're being used. Let's let's know for ourselves whether it is or isn't a contributing factor.
I just, you know, you say about contributing factor, I just want to, a point, because people say, oh, you're Sarno, you're cold-hearted. In my time with DA Bennett, when I dealt with the hardcore borderline juvenile probationers to to help them in a positive direction, and God bless you females, you know what was a contributing factor? Very rarely was there a male person involved with that young person. In my days in the South End Community Center, too, we didn't turn anybody away there. And we turned a lot of kids around on that interfamilies law. And so there's different contributing factors on it. And I think we're trying to do the best we can, given opportunities in our school systems, our nonprofits, helping out with programs and education on it. But I to try to I hope, I hope, what's it going to take? Somebody getting hurt or killed in one of our schools saying we, I am, the point here, I appreciate the conversation, or our school committee members, groups, they want this voted out, period. They want it out. Let's cut to the chase here. They want it out. And I'm just saying, what we have gone, done has been very good in keeping our system, I'm knocking on wood now, safe and sound to catastrophic events. Attorney Murphy alluded to, I mean, it just, it does seem like every other week, whether in rural, urban, or suburban areas, you're having school shootings that are occurring. So I, you know, I think reeducation, but you know, let's be fair, on the other side there, these certain groups putting out their surveillance, certain groups putting out their misinformation, putting out false narratives, and they continue to do it, even when it is explained to them. But we can have a meeting on it.
Mayor, can I just say, I'm sorry, I just want to agree with Ms. Gresham in the in the fact that, you know, 12 years ago, when we all got here, Ms. Gresham and Ms. Hurst and Mr. Collins and myself and Norm Rolldon, you know, the arrests rates were outrageous. And it was wrong. I mean, as someone who's worked in the juvenile justice system, it is just not a place for our young people to be. It doesn't work. It doesn't, it's too slow, as well-meaning as many of the folks down there are. It's just not a place for our kids to go. And so I thought that we all worked collaboratively, along with the superintendent and you, Mayor, to reduce, which, you know, the disturbing and lawful assembly, our kids were getting arrested for that. They were going into the system, and it made no sense whatsoever. And and I I thought the number was 200 or 300% that we've decreased our arrests in schools. So I mean, I am a 100% in support of that. And 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 certainly, if this policy, as we look at it, is something that increases that number, then we certainly need to look at that. I think that that's not going to be the case. But it's certainly something we should look at, and we should certainly not have our kids get arrested in school, because it's just, it's not good for our children. It's, and they're not going to get the support and the services that they need. And the diversion, as you said, Mayor, they're not going to get that really at the at the juvenile courthouse, unfortunately.
You know, this school committee was courageous. People forgot about the teen pregnancy issue some years ago, where Springfield was, you know, one or two always ranked with Hoy Oak and stuff. School committee on a on a split vote, took a strong stand, based it on the information, worked with Commissioner Helen Carlton Harris, other officials, to put implement programs there to make sure that our students were knowledgeable about this issue. Springfield no longer ranks up there anymore because we took that courageous stand. But I remember the controversy on that vote. I remember the controversy on the vote of Liberty Prep, too. And sometimes you just got to stand your ground. Because no matter what you do for certain entities, they're never going to, you're never going to appease them. So we took some difficult votes here, and they've proven to be beneficial to our youths and to our families. Will that make everybody happy? No, especially with individuals or groups that have an agenda to grind. But healthy discussion, that's what we're here for. But I think the school committee's done a good job on a lot of issues with Superintendent Warwick and more to do. I don't know if there's anything else. It's been a long day and evening for all of us. But if not, is there, if not, and I appreciate the back and forth, and I appreciate the constructive criticism, too. But I know in your heart that each and every one of the school committee members do care about your student and care about you, and we're trying to do the right thing. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? We're going to go on. Motion by Mr. Gonzalez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Attorney Murphy. Roll call voters require. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Yes.
Yes, more to this issue, this matter passes. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Thank you for watching. Good health and good evening. God bless.